Sige, ako lang ito.
Dika!
Ako lang ito, ikaw-ikaw dinito.
Hindi ano tayo? Ano muna tayo? Dispense?
Ah dispense na.
Calling for all... Ah dispense na.
Approve ba?
Yeah, approve.
Ah dispense.
Approve ba?
Ah, def- defer.
Dispense.
Please rise for the invocation to be delivered by the Honorable Florida Rita Pirobes, Representative from the Lone District of San Jose del Montecito.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. Let's all bow our heads for a prayer. Lord God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us opportunity to pay of service to others. As we end our session today and go on recess, allow us to thank you for the ideas and wisdom you have imparted to all of us that have made valuable contributions to the lives of our constituents and the nation. Thank you, O Lord, for gifting us with the courage to fight for what we think is right for our people and to make thought by necessary decisions. Bless us in our session today that we may perform our duties for the good of the Filipino people. Guide us as we continue our duty to pass meaningful legislations that will bring progress, peace, and justice to our countrymen. We bow our heads and leave up our plans to the Lord. We pray that you continue to bless our hearts and minds as we pray for your assurance that we're acting within your will. In part to ask your wisdom to make beautiful decisions. Give us character that will do our duty selfishly, not for personal ambition or conceit. Help us to work in humility and remove any selfish desires. O Lord, with the threat of the coronavirus in nineteen, we pray that you bestow your protection over us, our family, friends, and communities. Keep us safe in your loving arms. As a great physician, grant us strength and good health so that nothing will prevent your plan for our lives. Protect us from COVID-19 and other contagious and diseases that can riddle our body and bring danger to our lives. We pray for those battling the diseases, the disease. Heal them, O Lord, with your loving hand. We also pray for our healthcare workers who are standing in the frontliners, as frontlines, asking their own life for save others. We likewise seek infinite guidance for those working to discover treatment and vaccine to the COVID-19 virus. Our lives and our health are in your hands, Lord, and our trust and faith are in you. For this and all blessings, we give you thanks and eternal loving God. Before I end, I'd like to offer a silent prayer for our beloved Dori Iskavell Villanueva, who happens to be my aunt and the wife of our brother Eddie Villanueva, who just passed away yesterday at 5:55 in the afternoon. Our Father in Heaven, holy be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread and forgive us our sins as we fortress us against sinners and rebuke us of evil from evil. Amen. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
Please remain standing for the singing of the national anthem.
Bayang magigil peras ang silang anan. Alam ng puso sa gitipoy buhay. Lubang giniram buyan ng magigil. Sa manlulupi kita pa sisinil. Sa lalat puntok sa simoy at sa lagit ng paghaw. May nilang ang kula at awit sa paglayang nilabahan. Ang isap ng wata at mo'y ng umpay naraginig. Ang pituwing at haraw niya kaylan pag may manggiling. Luban ang haraw ng warangit pa sipa. Uyayabi sa gitop. Aming likaya napagmay maghahapig. At lalatay ng daril sayo.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we defer the calling of the rose. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to defer the approval of the journal of the previous session. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The chair is none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bills and resolutions on first reading for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of Business Bills on First Reading. House Bill 6526, Establishing a Green Public Procurement Program for All Departments, Bureaus, Offices, and Agencies of the Department of the Government by Representative Villaferro.
The Committee on Sustainable Development.
House Bill 6527, Providing for the Improvement Rehabilitation and Modernization of Tasangali Fish Port Complex in Zamangga City by Representative Dalipe.
To the Committee on Culture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 6528, Providing for a National Policy in Preventing Adolescent Pregnancies, Institutionalizing Social Protection for Teenage Parents by Representatives Acosta Alba, Zubiri, and Garin Janet.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 6529, Granting Hazard Pay to All Court Sheriffs by Representative Garin.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 6530 and 6531, Converting various provincial roads into national roads in the provinces of Apayo and Cagayan by Representatives Bulut and Vargas.
The Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 6532, Increasing the Lifetime Monthly Gratitude of Medal of Valor Awardees by Representative Palma.
The Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 6533, Providing for Mandatory Drug Testing of Public Utility Vehicle Drivers License applicants by Representative Sarmiento.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 6534, Establishing an Elderly Care and Nursing Complex in every city and province by Representative Marquez.
The Special Committee of Senior Citizens.
House Bill 6535, Renaming Barangay Santo Maria in Presentacion Camarinesur as Barangay Parugkan by Representative Cuente Velia.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 6536, Expanding the Mandate and Service Capability of the Donose Esmon Ford Medical Center Extension Hospital in Barot Tak Nueva, Iloilo, renaming the same as Donose Esmon Ford Medical Center by Representative Biron.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 6537, Renewing the Franchise Granted to Satellite Broadcasting Incorporated by Representative Ortega.
The Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 6538, Protecting the Right of the People to Freedom of Religion in the Philippines by Representatives Villanueva, Eduardo, and Rivera.
The Committee on Human Rights.
House Bill 6539, Increasing the Bed Capacity of Governor Faustino N. D. Senior Memorial Hospital from one hundred to three hundred beds by Representative Albán.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 6540, Declaring last week of August as National Youth Mental Health Week by Representative Robes.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 6541, Prohibiting Electric Vehicles from being parked in enclosed parking spaces by Representative Robes.
The Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 6542, Prescribing a Just and Humane Code of Conduct for the Resettlement of Underprivileged and Homeless Citizens by Representatives Nieto, Maseda, Malapitan, Martinez, and Valerian.
The Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 6543, Providing Support and Welfare Protection to Parents by Representative Suarez Aleta.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 6544, Codifying the Alternative Childcare Laws by Representative Suarez Aleta.
The Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 6545, Amending Further PD Number 1869, otherwise known as the PACOR franchise by Representatives Alvarez, Franz, Gonzalez, Aurelio, and Paderno.
The Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Bill 6546, Requiring the Establishment of Quarantine Facilities in all DOH hospitals in the country by Representative Campos.
The Committee on Health.
House Bill 6547, Amending and Repeating RA Number 9297, otherwise known as the Chemical Engineering Act of 2004 by Representative Nogralles Jerico.
The Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 6548, Mandating the Full Transparency and Disclosure of relevant facts and all requirements by the owners and/or developers of condominium projects to the buyers by Representative Corazma.
The Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 6549, Setting the Standard Working Conditions and Creating Occupational Safety and Health Standards of Workers in Film, Television, Theater, and Similar Industries of the Philippines by Representatives Gaite, Zarate, Brozas, Castro, Franz, and Elago.
The Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 6550, Providing Assistance to NHA Housing Beneficiaries by waiving and condoning all penalties and delinquency charges to the account of housing beneficiaries by Representatives Si Alvarado, Yap, Eric, and Revilia.
The Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 6551, Establishing the Marinduque Special Economic Zone in Santa Cruz, Marinduque by Representative Velasco.
The Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 6552, Declared in February twenty-one of every year as Aro ng Marinduque, a special non-working holiday in the province of Marinduque by Representative Velasco.
The Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 6556, Establishing a National High School in Gabihan, San Ildefonso Bulacan, to be known as the Gabihan National High School by Representative Silverio.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
Resolutions. House Resolution 774, Directing the Committee on Labor and Employment and the other relevant committees of the House to inquire on the effect of COVID-19 unemployment in industries and on the measures being implemented by the concerned government agencies by Representative Mendoza.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 775, Organizing the Philippines-Brazil Parliamentary Friendship Group by Representative Yu.
The Committee on Presidential Relations and Diplomacy.
House Resolution 777, Calling for a Review of the Guidelines Set by the COA in its Conduct of Audit on the Utilization of the Special Education Fund by the Provincial, City, and Municipal Local School Boards by Representative Robes.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 778, Directing the Committee on Human Rights to inquire on the various human rights violations and force surrender of farmers and members of the indigenous peoples' group Kalinga Tribe perpetrated by elements of the Seventeenth Infantry Battalion Philippine Army and the PNP Cagayan in Sitio Lago, Barangay Lipatan, Santunino, Cagayan Valley, Cagayan Province by Representatives Kulyama, Zarate, and Gaite.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 779, Directing the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries to inquire on the alleged harassment against rural missionaries of the Philippines by the Anti-Money Laundering Council by Representatives Gaite and Zarate.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 780, Urging the DEP, the ICT, DOH, and major telecommunications companies to come up with a task force which will recommend a mechanism for a home-based virtual education system for K to twelve students during the state of public health emergency by Representative Banyas Nogralles.
The Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Resolution 781, Directing the Committee on Cooperatives Development to inquire on the implementation of RA Number 11364, otherwise known as the Cooperative Development Authority Charter of 2019 by Representative Kanama.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 782, Directing the Committee on Cooperatives Development to inquire on the status of the implementation of the Oil Palm Financing Program of the LBP by Representatives Kanama, Ong Jose, Lacson, Padernios, and Ebcas.
The Committee on Rules.
Communications. Letter dated February eighteen, twenty-twenty of Arnold P. Dinunon CE, Municipal Mayor, Ambagyo Nueva Giscaya, submitting to the House the report on fund utilization and status of programs' project implementation as of December thirty-one, twenty-ninety.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated February twenty, twenty-twenty of Eleanor O. Mena, State Auditor Five, Supervising Auditor Audit Group CGS, Water District One, Two, and Other CGS Standalone Agent.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Agency Action Plan and Status of Implementation for FY twenty-eighteen and FY twenty-seventeen AAR of the PCOO.
The Committee on Appropriations.
Letter stated for March twenty-twenty of Janice G. Isensales, Deputy Director Furnishing the House with duly certified and authenticated BSP issuances.
The Committee on Bonds and Financial Intermediaries.
Letter dated March nine, twenty-twenty of Salvador Sima Deldea, Executive Secretary to the Honorable Senate President Soto, transmitting the letter of President Duterte, copy furnished the Honorable Speaker Cayetano, certifying to the necessity of the immediate enactment of Senate Bill 1357.
The Committee on Rules.
Committee Reports. Report Number 280 of the Committee on Revision of Laws on House Bill 6554.
The Committee on Rules.
Report Number 281 of the Committee on People's Participation on House Bill 6555.
The Committee on Rules.
Report Numbers 282 and 283 of the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Resolution 783 and 784.
The Committee on Rules.
Report Number 284 of the Committees on Agriculture and Food and Appropriations on House Bill 6558.
The Committee on Rules.
Report Number 285 of the Committee on Natural Resources on House Bill 6563.
The Committee on Rules.
Additional Reference of Business Committee Reports. Report of the Committee on Transportation and Committee on Appropriations. Committee Report Number 286 on House Bill 4786. Representatives Sarmiento, Yap, Eric, and Frask.
The Committee on Rules.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Committee on Appropriations. Committee Report 287 on House Bill 6568 by Representatives Sarmiento and Yap.
The Committee on Rules.
Report of the Committees on Transportation and Appropriations. Committee Report 288 on House Bill 6569 by Representatives Sarmiento and Yap Eric.
The Committee on Rules.
Report of the Committee on Revision of Laws. Committee Report Number 289 on House Bill Number 6570 by Representatives de Loza Montalán and.
The Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend the session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Sessions resume. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, with leave of the House, I move that we open the privilege hour. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The chair is none. With leave of the House, the motion to open the privilege hour is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that the lady from Kabataan Partilis be recognized to avail of the privilege hour, Representative Sarah Jane Elago. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Sarah Jane Elago of Kabataan Partilis is recognized and delivers privilege.
Maraming salamat, ang ginoong speaker. I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege concerning policies on student handbook that may curtail fundamental freedoms and human rights in schools. No permit, no exam policy, no promissory note policy, no hair color policy, no piercing earring policy, no deviation from dress codes policy. Mr. Speaker, ito ay puro na lang tungkol sa mga bawal. Gunit ang mga student handbook ay nagtatanong po ang mga estudyante kung paano naman makakapag-yes o makapagbibigay ng suporta kung paano nila matutulungan ang kanilang mga sarili sa isang mayabong na experience sa kanilang mga eskwelahan. Kaya, ang representasyon na ito mula sa kabataan at bilang isa na rin sa mga partilist na binubuo at binuo ng hanay ng mga konceho ng mag-aaral, ng publikasyon ng mga campus, at ng iba't-ibang school-based organizations ay naninindigan sa pagkamit ng demokratikong mga karapatan sa loob ng mga eskwelahan. The UNESCO Convention Against Discrimination in Education prohibits discrimination in education and also insists that education should be directed at the, and I quote, "strengthening of respect for human rights and fundamental freedoms" and that it should promote understanding, tolerance, and friendship among all nations, racial or religious groups. A human rights-based approach is a conceptual framework based on widely established human rights standards and is directed at creating a society that respects, protects, and fulfills human rights for all. Using a human rights education framework includes education about human rights through human rights and for human rights as follows. Education about human rights, which teach students about their rights, including the right to information from a diversity of national and international sources. Education through human rights that ensure that educational settings protect the human rights of learners. Education for human rights that empowers students to exercise their rights and defend the rights of others. Mr. Speaker, policies to achieve this kind of sustainable learning environments that stimulate critical and reflexive thinking and employing media and information literacy on top of human rights education to enable mutual respect and dialogue cannot be developed in a vacuum. The UNESCO Media and Information Literacy Policy and Strategy Guidelines recommend partnerships among government ministries and policies that connect media and information literacy to related public policies such as education, information and communication technologies, access to information, and the media. Hindi lang po sasapat ang isang education system na may roong nakadikit na age-appropriate, development-appropriate na human rights education kundi kinakailangan din ng isang programa para sa isang media and information literacy na tinatratong ang mga learners, ang mga estudyante. Gayun din ang mga guro na bilang mga kritikal na actors sa ating lipunan. Paano ba nila gagamitin 'yung impormasyon na kanilang nakukuha? O kung paano nila gagamitin ang kanilang pag-aaralan o napag-aaralan para umambag ng mga solusyon sa mga nakikita nilang mga issue at mga hamon sa ating lipunan? One holistic method for creating such a school were in human rights values permeate the ethos of the institutions is to adopt a whole-school approach. The UNESCO International Bureau of Education defines this as activities that, and I quote, "involve addressing the needs of learners, staff, and the wider community, not only within the curriculum but across the whole school and learning environment." Kumbaga, ginoong speaker, kung ano po 'yung napag-aaralan sa mga libro o kung ano po 'yung pinag-uusapan sa loob ng classroom, yun po ay naisasabuhay ng mga guro, gayun din ng kanilang mga estudyante. A whole-school approach is cohesive, collective, and collaborative action in and by a school community to strategically improve student learning, behavior, and well-being as well as the conditions that support them. Halimbawa na lang, ginoong speaker, kanina po sa ating kumite ng Metro Manila Development na pag-usapan kung ano-ano ba 'yung mga palisiya na pinapatupad sa mga eskwelahan na nakakaapekto sa pag-aaral at pagkatuto ng mga estudyante. Mahalaga pong bukod dun sa mga patakaran at mga guidelines ng Department of Education at ng Commission on Higher Education, pag-aralan din po natin, ano ba 'yung nilalaman ng mga student handbook? Ito ba ay nag-aambag dun sa pagkatuto ng mga bata bilang parte ng kanyang lipunan? Gender equity and equality aims should have a central place within such an approach. Such approaches can be recommended in all contexts but may prove particularly relevant in areas where intolerance and discrimination have come to affect the lives of learners in a profound way. Isa po sa mga pinagdedebatihan ngayon, sa mga youth fora, 'yung tungkol sa pagkakaroon ng mga uniform dress codes sa ating mga eskwelahan. Mahalaga po na makapagbukas din tayo ng mga espasyo dito sa loob ng kongreso. Tinatawagan natin ang Committee on Higher and Technical Education. Gayun din ang Committee on Basic Education and Culture. Kung pwede po ba nating pag-usapan kung paano natin mae-explore? Kung papanitilihin ba natin ito mga dress codes? O katulad ng nangyayari ngayon na hinahayaan po natin 'yung mga eskwelahan na siyang magpa-sa kung ano ba 'yung dress codes sa kanilang mga eskwelahan? A school that chooses such approaches no longer teaches human rights simply as a classroom topic but instead creates an environment where everyone understands, values, respects, and lives human rights in which students apply critical thinking skills and civic engagement in real-life experiences at the level of the school and its environment and where the acceptable norms of behavior are clear and respected. Mr. Speaker, there are four key areas to consider in developing such action plan for a whole-school approach to human rights education and 'yung mga contents po nito... And 'yung mga contents po nito, ang ginoong speaker ninanais na gawing paano ka lang resolusyon ng representasyon na ito ng kabataan. Unang-una po dyan ang tungkol sa pagugobyerno o 'yung pamamahala at partisipasyon sa loob ng mga eskwelahan. Pangalawa, school at ang relasyon nito sa kanyang komunidad. Pangatlo, ang tungkol sa curriculum. At ang pangapat, ay tungkol naman sa extracurricular and co-curricular activities at 'yung mismo school environment. This youth representation further would like to advance the following calls in combating discrimination and in promoting human rights and media and information literacy in our campuses. First is to urge schools to establish easy, effective, and accessible reporting mechanisms. Ginoong speaker, sa ngayon, sa social media po lumalabas, 'yung mga hinahing, karaniwan po sa social media napapaskil 'yung mga hinahing ng mga estudyante sa kanilang mga guro o sa kanilang mga school officials. Nandyan po 'yung mga secret files, mga secret pages. Imbis po na 'yung kanilang mga tanong ay naipaparating po nila sa loob ng institusyon, karaniwan po ay nagbubunga pa ng intriga, ng takot, o kaya naman confusion kung ito po ay napapaskil sa social media at hindi po agad-agad napaparating doon sa mga policymakers at 'yung mga magdidesisyon sa loob ng kanilang mga eskwelahan. Second, Mr. Speaker, is to support the mechanisms of education institutions in responding promptly to grievances of members of the academic community. Third, is to defend academic freedom and uphold institutional autonomy in higher education whose administrators may consider taking the following recommendations: Take active steps in precluding discrimination. Many universities' students' codes of conduct already prohibit discrimination to a greater extent than is required by law while also respecting the freedom of expression and academic freedom. One other way is to exercise leadership by responding to speech with more speech. It is important for university and school leaders to serve as an example to exercise leadership and articulate freely their opinion on human rights values and subjects. Bilang lugar ng pag-aaral, ito po ay nararapat na maging ligtas malayo sa kung ano man na pressure at takot na nagmumula hindi lang po sa hanay ng mga estudyante kundi maski ng mga guro at ng mga opisyalist. Pangapat, ginoong speaker, tinatawagan ko po ang ating mga kapwa-mambabatas: To our fellow legislators, we play three key roles in ensuring proper human rights education. First is to develop sound legislation and also to reject discriminatory bills. Second is to oversee executive enforcement. And lastly, to participate in interparliamentary collaboration. Sa susunod po na linggo, magkakaroon ng isang Inclusion and Diversity Conference ang mga estudyante at ang mga kabataan dito sa ASEAN. At ito po ay magaganap sa mga magitan na lang ng isang online teleconference dahil nga sa gitna ng COVID-2019 outbreak. At dito po mapag-uusapan kung paano ba makakatulong ang ibat-ibang mga parlamento para ang mga eskwelahan ay hindi nahihiwalay doon sa mga pangangailangan at mga pangarap na rin ng lipunan para sa isang tunay na malaya na mundo. Hindi lang sa isang bayan, kundi 'yung mga good practices na isang bansa na ibabahagi din po sa iba na nangangailangan pa ng lalong pag-unlan. Ginoong speaker, we can also ampass legislative measures to guarantee learners' rights and welfare and to provide human rights education and critical media and information literacy in schools. At tayo po ay nagsasagawa ng mga konsultasyon ngayon, hindi lang sa mga eskwelahan kundi sa mga komunidad kung paano po natin matatawagan ang mga sangguniang kabataan at iba pang mga community-based youth organizations sa pakikipagtulungan ng kanilang mga barangay officials at ng mga LGU officials sa pagpapatupad nito sa level ng mga barangay. Panghuli, ginoong speaker, anais ko pong manawagan sa mga schools at sa ating mga sangguniang kabataan na buong-buong sumuporta sa pagse-step up, level up ng ating mga sanitation drive sa ating mga public places. Gayun din sa mga schools. May report po tayo, mga teachers ang mga nangunguna dyan. Ngunit maaari din po silang matulungan nung ating mga estudyante at ng mga magulang nila kung sa kanilang assessment ay safe pa naman po na magkaroon ng isang particular na drive na ganoong tipo sa kanilang mga lugar. At pangalawag, ginoong speaker, na iparating din sa representation na ito ng deaf community na nananawagan po sila na sa mga press conference po ng Department of Health merong Filipino Sign Language at merong interpreter. Ayan po ay kasama dun sa Public Information Campaign na kinakailangan bilang tugon sa public health emergency na kinakaharap natin ngayon. Ayun lamang, ang ginoong speaker, nagpapasalamat po ang representasyon ng kabataan sa pagkakataon na isulong ang human rights education, critical media, and information literacy, at sa panahon po ngayon ang malinaw na Public Information Campaign bilang pagtugon sa coronavirus threat sa ating bansa. Maraming salamat, ginoong speaker at sa ating mga kapwa-mambabatas. Mabuhay po tayo lahat.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Representative Sarah Jane Ilago of Kabataan Partilist to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the privilege hour. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Speaker, again, I move that we suspend sessions.
How much is to be behaved?
Hello, hello. Where is the number one? Is that there? That's the last one. Hmm, this one. Date, date, okay then.
Then, how many minutes is it? About four minutes. Ah, my two.
Okay, okay.
It's a good one.
Can you see the camera? Can you see the camera? She strikes somebody.
Thank you, Mr. Chu.
Mister Speaker, before we proceed, may we recognize the guests of Honorable Princess Rihann Sakaluran, Representative of First District of Sultan Kudarat Province. Mister Mak Taog of Inaul, fashion designer from Maguindanao.
Kindly rise as your names are mentioned. Your leader, proceed.
Mister Speaker, may we recognize also the guests of Deputy Speaker, Brother Eduardo C. de Le Nueva and Honorable Domingos Rivera, Representatives of Sibak Partilist. They are Sibak Coordinators, Ms. Daisy Kilates, Ms. Gladys Galang, and Ms. Maria Cristina Calixto from the province of Isabela.
Welcome to the House of Representatives. Your leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members. So move, Mister Speaker.
Secretary General hereby is instructed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Pante. Baya. Belianosa. Abu. Abwex Altivar. Abunda. Akop. Costa. Costa Alba. Adjong. Advinkola. Kabas. Magarau. Maglipay. Ginaldo. Lubano. Almario. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Senaro. Alvarez Pantalyon. Mantematba. Matong. Daya. Garra. Argones. Arbison. Renas. Arroyo. Atienza. Mentado. Babasa. Bagatsing. Palindong. Banyas Negrales. Parba. Parbers. Paronda. Berzaga. Baskuk. Bautista. Bautista Bendigan. Belmonte. Vinites. Bernos. Yason. Piyones. Piron. Pulilia. Bondok. Bordado. Bravo. Prossas. Bulot. Bustos. Kabatbat. Kabuchan. Cabredo. Kagas. Calderon. Calixto. Caminero. Campos. Kanama. Ogdan. Kari. Castelo. Castro Franz. Castro Fredinil. Kayatano Alan Peter Compañero. Kayatano Mariala Arne. Celeste. Chato. Chipego. Tungalau. Ko Angelica. Ko Elizaldi. Kuwanko. Koliantes. Visologo. Kuwa. Kuaresma. Cueva. Kulyamat. Agoo. Dalipe. Talob. Tatol. Daza. Jesus. De Venesia. Defensor Lawrence. Defensor Michael. Delmar. De Los Santos. De Dosso Montalia. Demaporo Abdullah. Demaporo Muhammad Khalid. Tuavit. Tuhali. Guterte. D. Faustino Ino. D. Faustino Michael III. D. Ian Paul. Ebkas. Kleo. Elago. Enverga. Erisse. Ergel. Ermita Buahir. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrelia. Farías Ria. Farías Rudy Caesar. Fernandez. Fernando. Frer Juliet. Frer Luis. Flores. Fortune. Fortuno. Frasco. Fuente Belia. Gaite. Garbin. Garcia Jose Enrique. Garcia Pablo John. Garcia Vincent. Garin Janet. Garin Sharon. Casataya. Kachalian. Gato. Eron. Ko Ed. Ko Mark. Gonzaga. Gonzalez Arellodong. Gonzalez Neptun. Gonzalez Carlo. Rosetta. Giko. Gulyas. Guya. Arresco. Hataman. Hernandez. Herrera Di. Hofer. Halus Jos. Javier. Jimenez. Ko Elisa. Ko Wilton. Kong Hun. Labad Labad. Laxson. Laxson Noel. Lagman. Lagon. Lara. Lasatin. Dietron. Legarda. Lim. Lim Kaitchong. Lopez. Loyola. Losotan. Macpagal Arroyo. Maceda. Padrona. Malapitan. Mangawang. Mangundadato. Marcoletta. Mariano Hernandez. Mariño. Marquez. Martinez. Matba. Matugas. Mendoza. Mercado. Momo. Atividad Nagano. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Negrales Jericho. Negrales Juan Fidel. Nolasco. Núñez Malanyaon. Guaminal. Olivares. Ong Jose. Ong Ronnie. Ortega. Uwano Disson. Pacquiao Alberto. Pacquiao Rogelio. Padgiernos. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panotes. Peña. Pichai. Tel. Pineda. Plaza. Puno. Kimbo. Radaza. Ramires Sato. Ramos. Rimulia. Revilla. Reyes. Rivera. Robes. Rodríguez. Román. Romero. Romualdes Ferdinand. Romualdes Yedamarí. Romualdo. Romulo. Roque. Sacdalan. Sagarbarea. Sakaluran. Salceda. Salimbango. Salo. Sanchez. Sangkopan. Santos Recto. Sarmento. Sauluk. Savelliano. Xiao. Silverio. Singson. Singson Mihan. Sin Suat. Swan Sing Estridita. Swan Sing Horacio. Suarez Aleta. Suarez David. Sunthai. Si Alvarado. Kaduran. Talyado. Tambunting. Tan Alisa. Tan Angelina. Tan Shamir. Tan Sharri. Tan Shurni. Tejada. Teves Arnulfo. Teves Jose. Kianco. Tolentino. Torres Gómez. Tulfo. Tupas. Totor. Ti Alan. Ti Diego. Umali Alfonso. Umali María Victoria. Nabya. Ungab. Ui Juliet. Ui Rolando. Valeriano. Val Mayor. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Velasco. Veloso. Vergara. Villia. Villia Fuerte. Villanueva Brother Eddie. Villanueva Noel. Villar. Villarasa Suarez. Villarica. Violago. Yap Eric. Yap Victor. Yu. Zamora Ronaldo. Zamora Way Corat. Zarate Zubiri. Mister Speaker, the roll call shows that 269 members responded to the call.
Two hundred sixty-nine members responded to the call. The Chair hereby declares the presence of the corum. Lord Leader.
Mister Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move we reconsider on third reading House Bill Number 5832. And then Secretary General to read the title of the bill. Thereafter proceed to nominal voting. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
No objection. Chair is none. Sales approved. Secretary General is so directed.
House Bill 5832, an act creating the Department of Filipinos Overseas and Foreign Employment, defining its mandate, powers, and functions, appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 5832. Abante. Abaya. Abelyanosa. Abu. Abueg Zaldivar. Abunda. Akok. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adyong. Advinkula. Agabas. Agarau. Aglipay. Inaldo. Albano. Almario. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Hinaro. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amantematba. Amatong. Handaya. Gara. Aragonés. Arbison. Arenas. Arroyo. Accenza.
I vote no, and I'd like to request I be given a chance to explain my vote.
Mentado. Babasa. Bagatsing. Balindong. Banyas Nograles. Barba. Barber's. Baronda. Berzaga. Basco. Bautista. Bautista Bendigan. Belmonte. Benitez. Bernos. Biazon. Biliones. Piron. Bulilia. Pondok. Wardado.
Mr. Speaker, I am voting no, and kindly allow me to explain my vote later. Thank you.
Bravo. Rosas.
Mr. Speaker, I vote no, and I would like to explain my vote later.
Bulut. Bustos. Kabatbat. Kabotchan. Kapredo. Kagas. Calderon. Kalixto. Caminero. Campos. Kanama. Kawagdan. Kari. Castelo. Castro Franz.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is no, and I reserve my right to explain my vote later.
Castro Fredinil. Kayatano Alan Peter. Kayatano Mariala Arni. Celeste. Chato. Chipeko. Tungalau. Go Angelica. Go Elizaldi. Go Wanko. Coliantes. Trisologo. Kuah. Kuaresma. Cueva. Coliamat. Tagook. Delipe. Dalok. Tatol. Taza. Deusus. De Venesia. Defender Lawrence. Defender Michael. Delmar. De Los Santos. De Los Montalia. Demaporo Abdullah. Demaporo Muhammad Khalid. Tuavit. Tuhali. Guterte. D Faustino Ino. D Faustino Michael III. D Ian Paul. Epcas. Ecleyo. Elago.
My vote is no, Mr. Speaker, and I will explain my vote later. Thank you.
Enverga. Erise. Ergel. Ermita Buhayim. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrelia. Farignes Ria. Farignes Rudy Caesar. Fernandez. Fernando. Frere Juliet. Frere Luis. Flores. Fortune. Fortuno. Frasco. Fuente Belia. Gaite. Garbin. Garcia Jose Enrique. Garcia Pablo John. Garcia Vincent. Garin Janet. Garin Sharon. Gasataya. Gachalyan. Gato. Heron. Go Ed. Go Mark. Gonzaga. Gonzalez Aurelio Dong. Gonzalez Neptali. Gonzalez Carlo. Gorseta. Giko. Gulyas. Guya. Aresco. Hataman. Hernandez. Herrera D. Hofer. Halus Jos. Javier. Jimenez. Go Elisa. Go Wilton. Kong Hun. Labad Labad. Laxson. Laxson Noel. Lagman.
Mr. Speaker, I vote no, and I will explain at the proper time my negative vote.
Lagun. Lara. Lasatin. Diachon. Ligarda. Lim. Lim Kaitchong. Lopez. Loyola. Losotan. Makapagal Arroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Mangawang. Mangundadato. Marcoletta. Mariano Hernandez. Mariño. Marquez. Martinez. Matba. Matugas. Mendoza. Mercado. Momo. Atibidad Nagano. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nograles Jericho. Nograles Juan Fidel. Nolasco. Núñez Malanyon. Guaminal. Olivares. Ong Jose. Ong Ronnie. Ortega. Uwano Disson. Pakia Alberto. Pakia Rogelio. Padgiernos. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panotes. Peña. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Puno. Kimbo. Radaza. Ramírez Sato. Ramos. Rimulia. Revilla. Reyes. Rivera. Robes. Rodríguez. Roman. Romero. Romualdes Ferdinand. Romualdes Yedamari. Romualdes Yedamari. Romualdo. Romulo. Roque. Sacdala. Sagarberia. Sakaluran. Salceda. Salimbangon. Salo. Sanchez. Sangkopan. Santos Rector. Sarmiento. Saulub. Savelliano. Xiao. Silverio. Singson. Singson Mihán. Sin Suat. Swan Sing Estrelita. Swan Sing Horacio. Suarez Aleta. Suarez David. Sun Tay. Si Alvarado. Taduran. Talia Do. Tambunting. Tan Alisa. Tan Angelina. Tan Shamir. Tan Sharri. Tan Shurni. Tejada. Teves Arnulfo. Teves Jose. Quianco. Tolentino. Torres Gómez. Tulfo. Tupas. Tutor. Ti Alan. Ti Diego. Umani Alfonso. Umani Maya Victoria. Unabia. Ungab. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Valeriano. Val Mayor. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Velasco. Veloso. Bergara. Villa. Villa Fuerte. Villanueva Brother Eddie. Villanueva Noel. Villar. Villara Suárez. Villarica. Biolago. Yap Eric. Yap Victor. You. Zamora Ronaldo. Zamora Waikorat. Zarate Zbiri. Second call for House Bill 5832. Abaya. Pelianosa. Ako. Agabas. Aglipay. Albano. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Senaro. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante Matba. Andaya. Angara. Aragonés. Arbison. Arroyo. Bagatsing. Balindong. Banyes No Grales. Barbers. Bautista Bandigan. Pinitis. Piazon. Pondok. Bustos. Kabat Bat. Calderón. Campos. Kanama. Kawagdan. Karim. Castelo. Castro Fredinil. Chungalau. Kawanko. Coliantes. Cuarezma. Cueva. Cuyamat. Tagook. Dalipe. Dallo. Daza. De Jesus. De Venetia. De Duavit. Duterte. Ecleyo. Enverga. Erise. Espina. Espino. Ferrer Juliet. Frasco. Garbin. Garcia Jose Enrique. Gato. Go Ed. Gonzalez Aurelio Dong. Guruseta. Kiko. Guya. Jaresco. Hataman. Jimenez. Go Wilton. Kong Hun. Labad Labad. Lakson. Dia Chon. Legarda. Loyola. Malapitan. Mangundadato. Marco Leta. Martinez. Matba. Matugas. Mendoza. Nava. Nieto. No Grales Jericho. No Grales Juan Fidel. Nolasco. Ong Ronnie. Ortega. Padjernos. Padwano. Palma. Peña. Pineda. Plaza. Revilla. Reyes. Roman. Romualdes Ferdinand. Romulo. Sakaluran. Salceda. Sangkopan. Santos Rector. Sarmiento. Saulub. Savelliano. Xiao. Silverio. Singson. Swan Sing Horacio. Suarez Aleta. Suarez David. Si Alvarado. Taduran. Tan Alisa. Tan Shamir. Tan Sharri. Tan Shurni. Tulfo. Tupas. Tutor. Ti Alan. Ti Diego. Ungab. Vargas Alfonso. Velasco. Veloso. Villa Fuerte. Villanueva Brother Eddie. Villara Suárez. Villarica. Biolago. Yap Eric. Yap Victor. You. Zamora Waikorat.
With 173 affirmative votes, 11 negative votes, and no abstentions, House Bill Number 5832 is hereby approved on third reading. Can we now go on the explanation of votes for those who have made reservation?
Explanation of votes for House Bill 5832. Atienza.
Honorable Atienza, has three minutes.
Mrs. Riegel, dear colleagues, we voted no for this measure simply because it is not the solution to the problems of our overseas workers. Ang ating mga kababayan at katrabaho sa labas ng bansa ay maraming problema. Subalit lang solusyon ay hindi bumuuna namana isang birokrasya na malalagyan ng mga taong hindi naman dapat mailagay doon. Ayat lalo lamang lalaki ang problema ng ating mga magagawang na sa labas ng bansa kapagka ito'y naging batas. Ang pagbuo ng ano mang kagawaran bagong tanggapan ay para bagang ginagamit na lamang ngayon natin at ng gobyerno sa pagharap ng mga problema ng ating mga mamamayan. The solution that we did to provide housing for our poor is to pass a bill creating a department of housing. Ang tanung ko po ay nabigyan po ba ng mga bahay ang mga mahihirap? Ang sagot ay hindi. Hindi nga sila gumagawa ng bahay ngayon. Tumigil ang produksyon sapagka bumuuna naman tayo ng bagong tanggapan na inaasahan nating aharap sa problema. Ang lady po ba inabigyan ng pabahay? Yung pong nasira ng Baguio, Yolanda ay nakompletong na po ba ang programa ng pabahay doon? Ang sagot ay hindi sapagka may inaasahan tayong hindi naman ginaganap ang kanilang tunggulin. So therefore, the organization of a new department that will be supposedly handling the problems of our overseas workers will not happen. It will create a false hope on our people. Aasang ating mga kababayan malungkot sa kanilang buhay sa labas ng bansa subalit walang pagbabagong mangyayari dyan. Lalo lamang madadagdagan ang kanilang problema sapagka yung simpleng paraan ay lalo pang malalagyan ng mga ibang komplikadong sistema. Ang pagbuo ng isang tanggapan kagawaran ay hindi biro biro. Ang mga binoon ng mga nakaraang administrasyon hanggang ngayon alam natin walang epekto subalit hindi natin mabuoag sapagka tumatangi ang mga nakapwesto. Andyan po ang example. Bumuho tayo ng Metro Manila Commission as an experiment. Up to now, it is a monstrosity in the metro area that is not rendering service for our Metro Manila's. Bumuho tayo ng mga tanggapan nung batas militar ang nagahari sa atin. Hanggang ngayon, hindi natin maalis sa ating birokrasya sapagka 'yan ay permanente na. So that is the reason, Mr. Speaker, that I have in my heart. I want to help our overseas workers. We should support them more. The funding that will be given to these newly appointed officials should be given to the agencies now handling their concerns. Pero kung bumuuna naman tayo ng isang level of governance, that will only mean more corruption, more red tape, and more problems for our miserable people outside of the country. And that's the reason why that prompted me. This department should not see fruition. Instead, we should help the Dole, the POEA, the OWA. And if you would like to create another commission, another office, to help them out, we should do so. But to create a full department is again falling into the same rut of committing a very serious offense in public trust. People will be hoping that this new department will solve the problems of our people abroad. They will not because they will define, first of all, their powers, their tariffs, their benefits and all here in the Philippines and not abroad. Palakasin natin ang tulong, palakihin natin ang tulong sa mga OFW. Yes! Creation of a new department allowed resounding no. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Honorable Bordado.
Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Bordado, is recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, the government recognizes the contribution and sacrifice made by the countless Filipinos working overseas. It has always been one of our topmost priorities to ensure that their rights and interests, as well as those of their families, are protected and upheld, that avenues to further their skills and education are abundantly available through government programs and projects, and that there are channels open for them to raise their concerns through different government agencies and organizations. House Bill 5832 proposes the creation of the Department of Filipino Overseas, which will protect their rights and promote the welfare in interest of Filipino overseas. However, Mr. Speaker, the creation of such a department replicates some of the functions and programs of existing agencies mandated to uphold OFW welfare and rights, such as the Philippine Overseas Employment Administration, the Department of Labor and Employment, the Commission on Filipino Overseas, Philippine Overseas Labor Office, the Overseas Workers Welfare Administration, and even the Department of Foreign Affairs. Mr. Speaker, while recognizing the importance of the contribution of our overseas Filipino workers, is pertinent focusing our efforts into creating localized, long-term employment opportunities for our citizens will ultimately be more beneficial to the economy and to the citizens who have no other choice than to look to other countries for better job opportunities. Mr. Speaker, I am therefore voting no to House Bill 5832. Thank you.
Honorable Prossas.
Honorable Prossas, recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Gabriela Women's Party votes no to the bill creating the Department of Overseas Filipino Workers. Under the intention of supposedly protecting our OFWs lies the fact that this bill will actually institutionalize the export of Filipino workers, especially women workers, and make them prone to violence and abuse. Nakakalungkot na sa ilalim ng panukalang ito pagtitibay ng pagbugaw ng mga kababayan at mamamayan sa ibang bayan sa halip na puhusan ng paglikha ng disenteng trabaho dito sa ating bansa. Hindi matutuldukan ng paglikha ng isang bagong departamento ang mga kwento ng karhasan at abuso sa ating mga OFWs. Nakakabahala, Mr. Speaker, dahil madadagdagan pa ang listahan ng mga buhay na tinuldukan ng bitay o di kaya ng pagmamalupit ng kanilang employer. Flor Contemplacion, Jacatya Pawa, Gina Lynn Vilavende. Ilan pa ba ang dapat na mamatay para gawing prioridad ang paglikha ng disenteng trabaho sa Pinas? It also is alarming, Mr. Speaker, that this bill pushes for the delegation of the government's accountability over our OFWs to private recruitment agencies. Tiyak nagagamitin ito para maghugas kamay ang gobyerno sa mga kaso ng abuso at pagmaltrato sa ating OFWs. Lastly, Mr. Chair, hindi po labor export ang sagot. Ang sagot po natin ay dapat magkaroon talaga ng job generation sa ating bayan. For these reasons, I vote no to the bill creating the Department of Overseas Filipino Workers. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Castro Franz.
Honorable Castro.
Salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, bumoto po ang Act Teachers' Partilis ng no sa House Bill 5832 na naglalayong itayo ang Department of Filipino Overseas and Foreign Employment. Hindi tutugunan ng House Bill 5832 ang underlying problems ukul sa panginibang bansa ng ating mga mamamayan. Sa totoo lang, isinasan tabi ng panukalang ito ang puna o kritik sa labor export policy. Sa pagpasa natin ito, mas sinusuportahan pa nga ng pamahalaan at ilalagay sa katitikan ng batas ang labor export policy. Dumaan na sa ilang beses na repackaging ang OCWs at OFWs at ilang ahensya na ang ginawa, gaya ng POEA, OWA, et cetera. Ngunit hindi naman bumaba ang bilang ng mga kababayan nating napipilitang lumayo sa kanilang pamilya para makapagtrabaho. Hindi nawalan sa halip ay nadagdagan pa nga ang mga Flor Contemplacion at Mary Jane Veloso na nawalay sa pamilya, inabuso at kinlong pinatay sa ibang bansa, at kinalimutan ng mga otoridad sa Pilipinas. Ang punot dulo, tikom ang bibig ng pamahalaan at nagkikibit balikat lamang ito sa problema ng kawalan ng disente at nakabubuhay na sweldo, underemployment, at lack of employment dito sa Pilipinas, kaya napipilitan ang mga Pilipino na hanapin ang solusyon sa labas ng bansa. Dahil din sa kombinasyon ng budget cut sa Dole at iba pang responsableng ahensya at kawalan ng mga programa para sa job creation, worker protection, at labor relations, pati na rin ang talamak na kontrakwalisasyon at kawalan na kasiruguruan sa trabaho. Ginoong speaker, we are adding thicker layers of bureaucracy instead of decisively addressing and finally resolving these problems. We are again duplicating the functions of existing agencies and providing for possibilities of contradictions between them instead of ensuring that these authorities are fulfilling their respective mandates. Again, we are presenting to our people superficial solutions by creating a new agency, one without teeth to truly protect our OFWs. Instead of combating them to their problems will be over. For this reason, Mr. Speaker, we vote empathic no to House Bill 5832.
Honorable Elago.
Honorable Elago is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This youth representation firmly believes that we must exhaust all efforts to promptly and substantially address the needs and concerns of Filipinos overseas. Indeed, there is a need to ensure that support and response mechanisms are working, most especially for distressed OFWs. But, Mr. Speaker, will creating a new department solve the problem? Nababahala po ang mga kabataan na ito ay magbibigay lamang ng dagdag pang libel ng birokrasya na imbes na makabilis ay makabagal pa sa pagabot ng kinakailangan na tulong. We already have a system in place. We just have to ensure that it is working. Nababahala rin po tayo sa direksyon na tinatahak ng pagbubuo ng bagong departamento na nakaasa sa labor export. Hanggang kailan tayo aas sa OFW remittances para isalba ang ating ekonomiya? Hanggang kailan tayo magpapakasasa sa pagkakawalay sa pamilya at mga sakripisyo ng ating mga kababayan? Ilan pang mga bata at kabataan ang lalaki na malayo sa kanilang mga magulang at mga ate at kuya na nagtatrabaho sa ibang bansa? Imbes na bagong departamento, bakit hindi natin bigyan pansin at buhusan ng resources ang paglilikha ng trabaho dito sa Pilipinas at hindi po sa ibang bansa? Disenteng trabaho, ginoong speaker, pagtataas ng sahod, pagtigil ng kontrakwalisasyon, at ng laganap na endo, paglilikha ng kalidad at abot kaya at abot kamay na serbisyong panlipunan. Mr. Speaker, not only should we give our Filipinos overseas reasons to come back and work here, but we should create opportunities for them to stay in the Philippines. Stop labor export, this representation votes no to House Bill Number 5832. Trabaho sa Pilipinas, hindi sa labas. Maraming salamat, ginoong speaker.
Honorable Lagman.
Honorable Lagman.
Mr. Speaker, House Bill Number 5832 will uselessly balloon the bureaucracy, even as it will accelerate via a purported one-stop shop the deployment of overseas Filipino workers without addressing the enormous and escalating social cost of labor migration. Establishment of the projected department directly contravenes the longstanding national policy as mandated in Republic Act 8042 or the Migrant Workers and Overseas Filipinos Act of 1995, which provides that the state does not promote overseas employment as a means to sustain economic growth and achieve national development. The state therefore shall continuously create local employment opportunities. This bill merely gives lip service to this national policy by echoing it almost verbatim in its Declaration of Policy. However, the essence and purpose of this bill are manifestly to convert a hetero stock-up strategy to a permanent policy encouraging and promoting the export of Filipino manpower, notwithstanding a preferred sunset provision which was included to mitigate opposition to the measure, even as the so-called sunset provision ambitions a sunrise perpetuation of the department. Without even a performance audit on the accomplishments of Dole, POEA, OWA, CFO, Dipolo, and other agencies, this bill appears to debase the record performance of these government agencies in the protection of OFWs. The creation of this new department does not frontally address the following well-documented social cost of labor migration: breakdown of relationship between spouses and between parents and children, loneliness, anxieties, and emotional aches, and longings from long-term separation, including psychiatric problems. Children of migrants experience more issues and problems with coping in school due to lack of parental supervision and guidance, resulting in serious behavioral consequences, which such as substance abuse and early entry into sexual relation. Children of migrants are prone to sexual abuse. The cycle of economic dependence of members of OFW families continues until the migrants can no longer work and must confront the reality of their own survival and quality. and must confront the reality of their own survival and quality of life after retirement. Seventy percent of OFWs have been unable to save enough to attain their financial goals. The creation of the new department does not even attempt to reverse the feminization of workers' migration, with women accounting for 55.8% of OFWs. This phenomenon further aggravates the social cost of labor migration because as more and more women workers are deployed abroad, their children become destitute of motherly love, care, and guidance. The projected department does not also address the overriding reasons why Filipinos work overseas. This department does not add any protection to OFWs aside from expediting that ex-sudos to foreign employment. As candidly admitted by Labor Secretary Bello, although his initial reaction was that of neutrality because the department, his department is the board, he finally acceded because as a cabinet member, he cannot defy the wishes of the president. We must remember that we do not legislate to fulfill the president's campaign promises which are mere propaganda and basically error. We legislate to promote the general welfare as we achieve the fulfillment of national policies. The protection of OFWs can be fully achieved without creating a new and untested bureaucracy. I vote no.
Majority Leader. Honorable Gaita. Honorable Gaita is recognized.
Salamat po, Mr. Chair. Ginong speaker, mga kapokong kinatuwan, matibay ang panindigan ng bayan muna laban sa pursahang migrasyon at sa labor export policy. Dahil dito ang boto ng kinatuwang ito sa House Bill 5832 o ang panukalang batas na bubuo sa Department of Filipinos Overseas and Foreign Employment ay no. Habang ako po, ang pinakahuling tututol sa mga hakbangi magpapaunlad sa pagtugon sa pangangailangan ng ating mga kababayan OFWs, naniniwala po ako na ang tamang solusyon sa mga pangangailangan nila ay hindi nakabalangkas sa iba'yong pagpapatindi at pag-institutinisa sa polisiya ng pamahalaan na ilako sa ibang bansa ang ating mga kababayan. Sangayon po ako sa kritisismo na ang kasalukuyang mga serbisyo sa ating mga OFWs ay malubhang kinukulang. Na ang kasalukuyang mga mekanismo upang tulungan sila sa panahon ng kanilang pangangailangan ay salat na salat. Sa aking pong panningin, ang pagkukulang ito ay may ugat sa pagtingin ng ating mga kababayan na ang kanilang lakas pagawa ay isa lamang, quote-unquote, kalakal na pangexport. Ang pagtugon sa kanilang mga pangangailangan ay dapat nakabalangkas sa isang buong programa upang lumikha ng oportunidad sa ating sariling bansa. Magagawa ito sa pamamagitan ng pagtataguyod ng sustinido, sustinableng agrikultura na nakatuon sa lokal na pangangailangan, sa pagtatag ng industring lokal na tumutugon sa pambansang pagunlad, sa pagsulong ng mga polisiya nagtataguyod ng kalayaan pangekonomiya ng ating bansa. Kung wala po nito, Mr. Speaker, kung patuloy na nalulugi ang mga magsasaka dahil sa mababang presyo at pagbaha ng export products, kung patuloy ang tanggalan na mga manggagawa sa mga empresa dito na mga dayuhang kompanya, kung patuloy na maliit ang sahod at walang kasiguran sa regular na pangmatagalang empleyo, tuloy-tuloy po ang forced migration at labor export. Tuloy-tuloy po nating itutulak palabas sa bansa ang ating mga kabayan para lang magkaroon ng kabuhayan. Mr. Speaker, ang pagtatayo ng isang hiwalay na kagawaran ay maaring kauna-unahan sa buong daydig. Ngunit hindi dapat natin ito ipagmalaki. Bakit? Dahil sa isensya ay sinasabi natin ang mga Pilipino ay panghabang buhay na lang magiging OFWs. Na ang ating mga manggagawa ay lagi na lamang mapipilitang magtrabaho sa ibang bansa. Na ang Pilipinas ay mananatili na lamang exporter ng kanyang mga manggagawa. Taliwas po ito si sinabi ni Pangulong Rodrigo Duterte nung 2017, na sabi niya ay paglagpas ng sampung taon, ang pangako niya ay gagawin natin ang lahat upang makalikha ng sapat na lokal na trabaho upang di na kailangan mapilitang magtrabaho ang mga Pilipino sa ibang bansa. Ito po sana ang gusto nating tanungin.
Which one, Doc?
Ito po ang dapat nating abutin. Kung gayon, naniniwala ang kinatuwan na ito na ito ay hindi na kailangan na ang pagtatayo ng kagawaran ng OFWs. Maraming salamat, kung Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Zarate.
Ginong speaker, no ang boto ng kinatuwang ito ng bayan muna sa panukalang pagsasagawa ng bagong ahensya para sa mga overseas Filipino workers. Habang napakahigpit ng pangangailangan na ating protektahan ang ating mga OFWs na nasasadlap sa iba't ibang forma ng pagsasamantala at pagpapahirap upang maghanap ng kabuhayan sa ibang bansa, hindi ang pagpapalawak pa sa burukrasya ang kasagutan sa kanilang mga hinahing. Ginong speaker, mga kapokong mababatas, ang totoong dapat tugunan ng kagawaran ng ilislatura at ng ating pamahalaan ay ang kalagayang kailangan iiwan na ng maraming Pilipino ang kanilang pamilya para makipagsapalaran sa ibang bansa. Nilalagay sa pidestal ang ating mga bagong bayani na nagpapapasok ng remittances sa ating bansa. Ngunit ang totoo, napakalaki ng kanilang sinasakripisyo para sa napakapayak na pangarap para sa kanilang pamilya. Ito ang kalagayang dapat nating matugunan. Sa loob ng higit na apatnapung dikada, samutsaring mga programa at polisiya na ang pinatutupad ng ating pamahalaan upang ilako ang ating mga kababayan sa ibang bansa. Maging globally competitive, ang sabi nga nila. Magsalita ng Ingles at iba pang Wika, maging mga manggagawa ng small parts, technical, and vocational studies at iba pa. Ang sinusubo natin sa ating mga kabataan at mga manggagawa. Tila ang primaryang export ng ating bayan sa kasalukuyan at maging umanakaraang panahon ay ang atin ang mga mamamayan. Ang batas na ito, ang panukalang batas na ito ay lalo pang, lalo lang pinapatigas ang ganitong iskema ng pamahalaan sa labor export. Habang pinapagbuhan umano ang mga karapatan ng mga migrante, ito ay nasa binggit ng komodipikasyon ng pagawa. Bilang panghuli ginong speaker, uulitin ko po, hindi ang Department of OFWs ang kahilingan ng ating mga migranteng Pilipino kundi ang pagtatapos na ng labor export policy. At ang makasama nila, ang kanilang mga pamilya, at ang sapat na trabaho at nakabubuhay na sahod dito sa ating bansa. Maraming salamat, ginong speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we consider, on third reading, House Bill Number 59 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the said measure and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. So move.
Any objection?
The Chair's not, the Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 59 for consideration on third reading. Afterwards, call for nominal voting for third reading.
House Bill 59, an act setting the minimum paid-up capital and locally-produced stock inventory requirements for foreign retail business enterprises, amending for the purpose Republic Act Number 8762, otherwise known as the Retail Trade Liberation Act of 2000. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 59. Abante.
Mr. Speaker. Was a pleasure. I vote no to the bill, Mr. Speaker, House Bill Number 59. May I be allowed to give my explanation?
At the proper time.
Abaya. Belianosa. Abu. Abwegs Aldivar. Abunda. Aco. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adyong. Vincula. Agabas. Agarao. Aglipay. Aginaldo. Albano. Almario. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Henaro. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante Matba. Amatong. Andaya. Angara. Argones. Arbison. Arenas. Arroyo. Achenza.
Mr. Speaker, we vote with an emphatic no on this measure. At sana ipaintudutan niyo kami magpaliwanag ng aming boto pagkatapos ng bilangan upang may paliwanag namin ang kamuktutan itong panukalang batas na ito. Pinakamasama sa kasahe-saya ng Kongreso sa Pilipinas.
Umentado. Babasa. Bagatsing. Balindong. Panyas Nograles. Barba. Barbers. Baronda. Barzaga. Basco. Bautista. Bautista Bandigan. Belmonte. Benitez. Bernos. Biazon. Bilyones. Piron. Pulilia. Bondok. Wardado.
Mr. Speaker, I am voting no to House Bill 59 and kindly allow me to explain my vote later. Moreover, Mr. Speaker, I am moving that my name be deleted as a co-author of the bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Bravo. Brosas.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is no, and I would like to explain my vote later.
Bulot. Bustos. Kabatbat. Kabotchan. Cabredo. Cagas. Calderon. Calixto. Cabinero. Campos. Canama. Kawagdan. Kari. Castelo. Castro Franz.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is no, and I would like to explain my vote later.
Castro Fredinil. Kayatano Alan Peter Companiero. Kayatano Marial La Arne. Celeste. Chato. Chipeco. Chualao. Conjelica. Co-Elejaldi. Kwanko. Coliantes. Crisologo. Kua. Quaresma. Cueva. Coliamat. Tagooc. Delipe. Talok. Tatol. Daza. De Jesus. De Venetia. Defender Lawrence. Defender Michael. Delmar. De Los Santos. De Los Montalia. Demaporo Abdullah. Demaporo Muhammad Khalid. Duavit. Duhali. Nuterte. D Faustino Ino. D Faustino Michael III. D Ian Paul. Epcas. Ecleyo. Elago.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is no and let me explain my vote later. Thank you.
Enverga. Erice. Ergel. Ermita Buhain. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrelia. Farías Ria. Farías Rudy Caesar. Fernandez. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Flores. Fortune. Fortuno. Frasco. Fuente Belia. Gaité.
Mr. Speaker, isang galit na no ang boto ng kinatawang ito at papaliwanag ko ang aking boto sa angkop na panahon.
Garbin. García José Enrique. García Pablo John. García Vincent. Garin Janet. Garin Sharon. Gastaia. Gachalian. Gato. Heron. Goet. Gomart. Gonzaga. González Aurelio Do. Gon... González Neptali. González Carlo. Guruseta. Giko. Gulyas. Guya. Jaresco. Hataman. Hernandez. Herevadi. Hofer. Alusjos. Javier. Jiménez. Co Elisa. Co Wilton. Konghun. Labad Labad. Lakson. Lakson Noel. Lagman.
Mr. Speaker, I vote no and at the proper time I will explain my vote.
Lagun. Lara. Lazatin. Leachon. Legarda. Lim. Limkaychong. López. Loyola. Losotan. Makapagalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Mangawang. Mangundadato. Marco Leta. Mariano Hernandez. Marinho. Marquez. Martínez. Matba. Matugas. Mendoza. Mercado. Momo. Natividad Nagano. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nograles Jerico. Nograles Juan Fidel. Nolasco. Núñez Malanyaon. Huaminal. Olivares. Ong Osé. Ong Roni. Ortega. Uano Dison. Pacquiao Alberto. Pacquiao Rojello. Padgeirnos. Padwano. Palma. Pancho. Panotes. Peña. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Puno. Kimbo. Radaza. Ramirez Sato. Ramos. Rimulia. Revilla. Reyes. Rivera. Robes. Rodríguez. Roman. Romero. Romualdes Ferdinand. Romualdes Adamri. Romualdo. Romulo. Roque. Sacdalan. Sagarberia. Sacaluran. Salceda. Salimbango. Salo. Sanchez. Sangkopan. Santos Repto. Sarmento. Saulup. Savelliano. Xiao. Silverio. Singson. Singson Mihán. Sinzuat. Swansing Estrelita. Swansing Horacio. Suárez Aleta. Suárez David. Sunthay.
Mr. Speaker, I vote no and I deserve my right to explain my vote.
Si Alvarado. Taduran. Talyado. Tambunting. Tan Alisa. Tan Angelina. Tan Shamir. Tan Charian. Tan Sherni. Tejada. Teves Arnulfo. Teves José. Tianco. Tolentino. Torres Gómez. Tulfo. Tupaz. Totor. Di Alan. Di Diego. Umali Alfonso. Umali María Victoria. Unabia. Ungab. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Valeriana. Val Mayor. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Velasco. Veloso. Vergara. Villia. Villia Fuerte. Villia Nueva Brother Eddie. Villia Nueva Noel. Villiar. Villia Rasa Suárez. Villia Rica. Violago. Yap Eric. Yap Victor. Yu. Zamora Ronaldo. Zamora Waikorat. Zarate.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is no and I will explain my vote later. Thank you.
Zubiri.
Ah, Mr. Speaker, may I explain my abstention? I abstain and I have an explanation for my abstention. Second call in consideration House Bill Number 59. Abek Saldivar. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Aglipay. Alonte. Alvarez Pantalyon. Aragonés. Arbison. Arenas. Babasa. Barber's. Baronda. Bautista Bandigan. Bernos. Pirón. Bustos. Canama. Kawagdan. Kari. Castro Fredinil. Kaytano Alan Peter. Kaytano María Larni. Celeste. Chato. Co Wanko. Coliamat. Tagoo. Datol. Daza. De Jesus. De Venetia. Defender Michael. Delmar. Demaporo Abdullah. Demaporo Muhammad Khalid.
Duapi Du Hali Du Therte Di Austin O'Michael Di Ian Paul Ikleyo Irisse Espino Mariñas Ria Cristina Fernandez Flores Fortun Fortuno Frasco Garbin Garcia Enrique Gasataya Gato Go Ed Gonzalez Aurelio Tong Guriseta Giko Guya Areesco Hataman Javier Jimenez Ko Elisa Ko Wilton Konghun Labad Labad Lakson Yeton Ligarda Limkaitong Loyola Maceda Madrona Malapitan Mangawang Mangodadatu Marquez Martinez Matugas Mendoza Mercado Momo Nograles Juan Fidel Dolasco Nunez Melaniaon Ongroni Paqueao Alberto Paqueao Rogelio Paduano Palma Peña Pineda Plaza Revilla Romualdes Ferdinand Sagarbaria Salceda Sanchez Sangkopan Santos Rector Saulup Singson Sin Suat Swansing Horacio Suarez Aleta Tan Shamir Tan Sherni Teves Arnulfo Tulfo Tupas Umani Aurelio Ungab Valeriano Val Mayor Vargas Alfonso Velasco Veloso Villia Fuerte Villia Nueva Eduardo Villia Rica Violago Yap Eric Yap Victor Zamora Waikorat
With one hundred fifty-six affirmative votes, thirty negative votes, three abstentions, House Bill 59 is approved on third reading.
Mr. Speaker.
It was the pleasure of the gentleman from Bohai Portiles.
May we, uh, again hear the votes of affirmative who supported the bill?
Hundred fifty-six affirmative votes, thirteen negative votes, three abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Now, for the explanation of votes, may we call the minority leader?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My dear colleagues, the objective of House Bill Number 59 with six to amend Republic Act Number 8762 is to remove the barriers to foreign investment in the local retail sector and open the Philippine retail industry by, number one, lowering the paid-up capital from US dollars 2.5 million to US dollars 200,000; and number two, reduction of required locally manufactured products carried by foreign retailers from thirty percent to ten percent. This is, Mr. Speaker, a drastic approach. Whichever way you put it, any drastic approach will have unintended consequences. The slide from US dollar 2.5 million to a misleading US dollar 200,000 or a reduction equivalent to a staggering ninety-two percent, a very big number, is not a mere cause for concern. It is not a cut above the knee. It is cutting the head off. Why would we want to do this? Coupled with a twenty percent reduction on required locally manufactured products and whatever Philippine retailers we have will fall to the ground.
Ang masakit na po dito, bukod dito, sinabayan pa ito ng pagtanggal ng ibat-ibang aspeto ng Retail Trade Liberation Act. Katulad po ng removal of requirement for foreign investors to acquire shares of stocks of local retailers, removal of requirement for public offering of shares of stocks by foreign-owned retail enterprises, and elimination of required network number of retailing branches and retail track record conditions for foreign retailers to engage in retail trade in the Philippines. Sobrang, sobra na po ito. Why are we favoring the foreigners so much? Why are we giving them so much? Hindi ba natin nakita ang kasalukuyang nangyayari ngayon? Sa Pogo palaman po, sangkatutak na problema na ang pinapasan ng bayan mula sa hindi pagbayad ng buwis sa pagtaas ng kriminalidad hanggang sa bagabastos mismo sa kapwa nating mga Pilipino. At bibigyan natin na iba pang, iba pa na magpunta dito sa halip na Pilipino muna ang protektahan natin. The Filipino First Policy has been here since we became independent as a nation, supposedly. It was designed to regain economic independence, not only political independence, but it was never to ease out foreign capital. It was collaboration and establishment of special foreign relations all the while promoting Filipino participation in our own national economy. House Bill 59 will not do that. Instead, whatever Filipino participation we have will most likely be marginalized and left unprotected. Instead of passing House Bill 59, we should pass a law that will protect our own, one that will help our Filipinos. This representation is not asking for something new. It is something all nations should do. Just one minute, Mr. Speaker. Protect our own, protect Filipinos. At the end of the day, do we, as legislators, really want this? To be a member of the 18th Congress who single-handedly passed a sweeping amendment that killed the local industry? We have failed the Philippine Constitution by the mere proliferation of Chinese citizens who have taken jobs in the Pogo industry, which a Filipino can also do. By passing House Bill 59, we violate the very essence of the Filipino First Policy that is enshrined in our Constitution and failed the Filipino people. With all due respect to my colleagues, itigil na po natin ito, tulungan mo na din ang mga Pilipino, Mr. Speaker. For the reason I have just stated, I voted no to House Bill Number 59. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
May I remind the members to please observe, uh, our rules? Section, uh... Section 118, you have only three minutes to explain the votes.
Rimulia.
Mr. Speaker, I abstain from this, from voting in House Bill Number 59. Maliho na nakakalimutan na natin ang ating kapwa Pilipino pagdating po sa mga batas ng ating pinapasa. Parang lagi na lang nauuna ang dayuhan, lalong-lalo na sa pagkakataon ito, na kung saan ang tingin ng ating mga kababayan na hanap-buhay o negosyo ay nagsisimula po sa retail trade, sa mga tindahan. Iikutan po natin ang mga malalakas na ekonomiya sa buong mundo. Sabihin natin ang Hapones, ang Hapon, ang bansang España, ang bansang Prinses, kaniya pong pinaprotektahan ang kanilang mga mangagawa, mga gumagawa ng ibat-ibang mga produkto gamit ang kanilang mga kamay, gamit ang mga natutunan nila, mula pa sa kanila mga ninuno, mga artisano, artisans. Yan po ang essence ng isang malakas na ekonomiya na hindi po nawawala. na hindi po nawawala ang mga skills sa taong bayan. Unit sa ginagawa po natin, ang mahalaga na lang sa atin ay mall. Ang mahalaga sa atin ay malalaking negosyo. Ang mahalaga na lang sa atin ay ang dalin ng buhay. Unit paano natin suportahan ang ating ekonomiya kung di natin suportahan ang masang Pilipino. 'Diyan po ang gagaling ang aking pagdududa kung ito pong House Bill Number 59 ay makakabuti sa ating mga kapwa Pilipino. Kaya po, tignan natin, sa Pranses, ikutan natin ang bansang Pranses, kaunting-kaunti ang mall nila. Ang kanila pong gusto ay palakhin o paramihin ang ibat-ibang maliliit na negosyo na itinatayo ng kanila mga kababayan. Unit sa atin, pinapatay po natin ang ating mga Pilipinong naghanap-buhay na marangal sa pagdinegosyo sapagat pinapapasok na natin ang mga dayuhan kahit maliit lang kapital na makipaglaban po sa ating mga nagdinegosyong mga Pilipino. Sana po, wag po nating gawing solusyon lagi ang kapital na nagagalit sa ibang bansa para umunlad ang ating bansa. Hindi po 'yan lagi ang solusyon. Ang solusyon siguro, rahil, ay tignan po natin ang lakas ng ating ekonomiya at galing ng ating mga taong bayan at 'yun po ang ating paigtingin at palakasin. Sila po ang ating mga bayani.
Please wind up.
Sila po dapat ang ating tinutulungan. 'Yun lang po, kaya po ako'y nag-abstain sa issue of House Bill Number 59. Maraming salamat po.
Honorable Atsiaza. Salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Gaya ng sinabi ko, ang aking boto at ng Buhay Partilis ay isang madiin na hindi. Hindi pwede itong batas na ito. Itong batas na ito ang magiging, magbibigay ng permanence sa paghihirap ng ating mga kababayan Pilipino. Itong batas na ito ay magbibigay ng pagkakataon sa mga banyaga na sila makinabang sa mga kalikasan, likas na yaman, at produkto ng Pilipinas. Ang mga dayuhan ang mapagbibigyan itong batas na ito at hindi ang mahihirap na Pilipino. Naaalala ko ang panahon ng batas militar. Ang mga mahihirap ay kumakain na lamang ng minsan sa isang araw. Ang sabi nga nila, ang aming kinakain ay alpang lap. Almusal, tanghalian, atapunan. Itong batas na ito ay masahol pa sa batas militar sa pag-itiyong magaalis ng pagkakataon sa kanilang hanap-buhay na ang mga mayakda ay mananagot sa ating bayan sa darating ng mga panahon. Hindi ito makalulusot. Sa aking pandanaw, ang ating panguloy magigising sa katotohanan at hindi niya palulusot 'yun ang batas na ito sapagat ito ay walang ibibigay kundi permanent poverty for our people. Bibigyan pa ninyo ng pagkakataon ng mga banyaga na makipagkompetensya sa ating mga mahihirap na nagdinegosyo. Darating ang araw pati nagtitinda ng sigarilyo sa kalye galing sa sina. 'Yan po magiging katotohanan sapagat binigay na natin ang ating katubigan, binigay na natin ang ating kalikasan, binigay na natin ang ating patibangan. Ngayon, binigay na natin ang paghanap-buhay sa kanila. Kaya inuulit ko po, nakakahiya na aminin na ito ay galing sa Kongresong ito. Mataas ang pagtingin ang ating mga kababayan dito sa ating 18th Congress na hindi bagay itong batas na ito manggaling sa ating hanay. Ako'y nakikiusap sa inyong lahat. Humiparaan, himukin natin ang ating mga senador na ito ay hindi ang kinin at ito ay tangihan. Ako'y makikiusap sa ating Pangulung Duterte. Kung kinakailangan, pupunta ko sa malakanya. Paliliwanag ko sa kanya ang magiging buhan itong batas na ito. Wala pong kabutihan para sa mahihirap kundi sa mga banyaga na merong sarapi at may puhunan.
Mr. Speaker, this Congress will always be remembered for many things, primary of which is tonight, the passage of this bill on third reading that will give the Filipinos permanent poverty in our own land. Nakakahiya na aminin na nagmula ito sa hanay ng 18th Congress. Inuulit-ulit ko po 'yan sapagat 'yan ay pananagutan ng mga bumoto upang ito ay magigising sa batas.
Please wind up.
'Yan ay pananagutan ng mga mayakda. Walang inisip kundi itulak ang agyenda ng mga mayayamang banyaga na ngayon ay magkakaroon na ng kontrol pati rin sa pinakamaliit na negosyo na binibigay ng ating kalikasan. Mr. Speaker, we should all be ashamed. Mr. Speaker, we should now start to pray more fervently. Are we doing the right thing for our people?
I'm inspired.
Or are we selling them down the drain? My vote is a proud no to defend our country, to defend the words that we sing in our national anthem. Kanta tayo ng kanta, dasal tayo ng dasal dito sa Kongresong ito. Subalik, hindi natin sinasama sa ating paggawa ng batas. Itong batas na ito ay pagsuway sa lahat ng ating panunong pa, sa ating pinabahal na watawat ng Pilipinas. Maraming salamat po.
Honorable Zubiri.
Dear Mr. Speaker, I abstained and not said a direct no. Why? Simply because my idea of trade is fair trade. What is fair trade? Is that our citizenry, our people, will be given a fighting chance in the event that we liberalize our trade laws with other nations. With this current bill, you only would need $200,000 to come in, and that is not correct. My idea is simple. From 2.5, okay, bring it down, but bring it down to a minimum of $500,000 paid-up capital for our SMEs, our small businessmen, will have a good fighting chance to survive. With this current bill, our SMEs will definitely have a difficult time surviving if we keep the minimum at $200,000. I am not against liberalization or free trade, but it has to be fair, equal. Protect the small. Protect those who don't have the capacity to compete with the big boys out there. Papayag ba tayo na dehado ang ating mga kababayan? Yes or no? Definitely, it's a no. But there's still hope. Hoping that the BiCam or the Senate will do its job to bring up the $200,000 to a bare minimum of $500,000, Mr. Speaker. So at least, mabubuhay po 'yung ating maliliit na mga negosyante. Kung 500,000 ang pataas, 'yung kompetitory, 'yung kakompetensya po ng mga ito ang malalaking mga negosyante na. So itong $200,000 is really going to hit our small businessmen, and this I do not agree. So, Mr. Speaker, dito na lang po ako. Hopefully, we will get the right figure during the BiCam. Maraming po salamat. Mabuhay po tayo lahat. Mahal kita, Pilipinas.
Honorable Portado.
Mr. Speaker, no less than the 1987 Philippine Constitution declared the development of a self-reliant and independent national economy effectively controlled by Filipinos as a state policy. Section 19, Article 2. Thus, Mr. Speaker, due regard must be accorded to the welfare and promotion of the full potential of our citizenry in formulating economic measures. While foreign participation in retail trade has been authorized by virtue of Republic Act Number 8762 or the Trade, the Retail Trade Liberalization Act, amending RA Number 1180 or the Retail Trade Nationalization Act of 1954, and such development paved the way for a more competitive retail industry where micro, small, and medium enterprises were given wider business opportunities. The entry of foreign players in the Philippine market was, however, made subject to stringent conditions to protect local retail enterprises. Mr. Speaker, these conditions are being sought to be relaxed under House Bill Number 59 to the detriment of local retailers. More particularly, Mr. Speaker, the substantial lowering of the foreign equity capitalization requirement from $2.5 million to $200,000 under Section 1 of House Bill 59 might open the floodgates for foreign participation that will eventually drown our local players. Mr. Speaker, a sound economic policy must take into consideration the entry of foreign retailers vis-a-vis its impact to local retail industries. Government policies, especially those involving economy, must be attuned with the present business and socioeconomic demands. However, Mr. Speaker, we must be wary of the threats and effects that it may create to our local industries, most importantly, to the micro, small, and medium enterprises. In times of socioeconomic uncertainties and inflationary pressures where loyalty and nationalism
Time expired.
are put to the test, Mr. Speaker, we must protect first and foremost our very own. It is for this reason that I am voting no to House Bill Number 59. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Rosas.
Mr. Speaker, Gabriela Women's Party resoundingly rejects the further relaxation of limits to foreign ownership in the local retail industry under House Bill 59. Through this measure, foreign SMEs, which have cheaper and well-established sourcing of production inputs, will take over and edge out small local businesses in the retail sector. This would deny our entrepreneurs their chances of scaling up and staying in the game. Babansutin ng panukalang ito ang kakayahan ng mga lokal na maliliit na negosyo kabilang ang mga nasa pampublikong pamilihan at maliliit na grocery stores na umunlad dahil tatalunin sila sa kompetisyon. Tiyak na mapupuruan din ang mga mangagawa sa retail trade. Nakalakhan ay kababaihan dahil magreresulta ang pagkalugi ng mga maliliit na negosyo sa kaliwatkan ang tanggalan. Sinasabi ng mga sponsor na matitibag daw ang monopolio ng malalaking malls kapag ipinasa ang panukalang batas na ito. Sa aktwal, hindi naman ito mangyayari dahil ang lokal na SMEs ang direktang maapektuhan sa pagpasok ng mas maraming foreign retail businesses. At kung serioso tayong baguhin ang kalakaran sa retail sector, kailangan pigilan ang pagkopo ng shopping malls sa prime assets at lupain at higpitan ang mapagsamantalang iskema na consignment. House Bill 59 forms part of the new wave of neoliberal and pro-market reforms under the Duterte administration that seek to further open up the economy for foreign profiteering and plunder. Alongside the amendments to Foreign Investment Act and Public Service Act, this will disturbingly put our national patrimony for sale. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Castro of France.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Actiturs Partilis vote no to the further liberalization of retail trade because this is anti-Pinooy entrepreneur and anti-Filipino consumer. Mr. Speaker, House Bill 59 is yet another neoliberal attack to the Filipino economy, one that will prejudice Pinooy micro, small, and medium entrepreneurs as well as Pinooy consumers. The Actiturs Partilis maintains that small and medium retailing should remain reserved exclusively for Filipinos. Through its efforts to ram through charter chains that will erase economic protectionism in the Constitution, the Duterte administration aims to lay our country wide open for giant foreign corporations to fully exploit Philippine workers and resources. But not only that, with House Bill Number 59, the administration also seeks to entice the entry even of small and medium foreign retailers which will directly compete with and does crowd out small and medium Pinooy entrepreneurs which have at least 3 million pesos and 15 million capital respectively. A drastically lower capitalization requirement of 10.2 million pesos will lead to an influx of foreign players even in small and medium retailing. This is far from the demands of the Pinooy entrepreneurs, especially MSMEs and those not formally organized who have long cried out for greater state support in the form of policies, subsidies, and programs geared towards SME development and for the implementation of current laws protecting them against unfair competition. Laying Pinooy retailers vulnerable to competition by foreigners also jeopardizes the jobs and livelihoods of over 2 million workers who rely on Filipino retail businesses. And as shown in the proliferation of Endo and violations of labor laws, foreign companies and Philippine government have never proven themselves trustworthy to be on the side of the workers. Also, Filipino consumers will not benefit with lower prices and more choices. With this bill, the Philippine market will instead be flooded with foreign products which will, of course, be more expensive than local ones. And the repeal of mandatory domestic sourcing of inventory will cut Pinooy manufacturers off from supply chain and discourage Filipino
Please wind up.
Fifteen seconds, Mr. Speaker. Which thrive in the supply chain. Consequently, this will hinder the creation and growth of the new existing Pinooy retailers. House Bill Number 59 is now being cooked in context of worsening neoliberal reforms such as amendments to the PSA which open utilities to foreign ownership, amendment to foreign investments, and the like. All of which have been killing the lives and livelihood of the Filipino people, Mr. Speaker. For this reason, we vote no to House Bill Number 59.
Honorable Ilago.
Mr. Speaker, this youth representation votes against further retail trade liberalization. Young people are now at the forefront of innovation, startups, and entrepreneurial endeavors, and further liberalizing trade would rob them of opportunities to propel their businesses upward. Malayong-malayo po ito sa panawagan ng ating mga MSMEs para sa ibayong suporta at pagpapatupad ng mga batas para sa pantay na kalakalan. Ito po ay kataksilan sa lahat ng mga Pilipinong nagsisikap maghanap-buhay sa retail trade. It's a shame, Mr. Speaker, that we are putting the interest of foreign retailers before our own. Ganito po ba ang pagiging makabayan na nais nating ituro sa mga kabataan? Kahapon, nilakuhan natin sa dayuhan ang public utilities. Ngayon, retail trade naman. This is grossly unfair and unjust, especially to our Philippine MSMEs. Ang boto ng kabataan ay para sa proteksyon ng ating mga malilikha in na lokal na produkto? Para ito, sa ating mga magsasaka at mangagawa na lumilikha ng mga lokal na produkto? Para ito, sa mga sari-sari stores at mobile vendors? Pilipino muna, Pilipinas muna. Kabataan Partilis votes no to House Bill Number 59.
Honorable Gaite.
Ginawang speaker, nangangalit na no ang aking boto sa panukalang amyenda sa Retail Trade Act of 2000. Ang aming pong tindi sa amyendang ito ay ang pangalan rin ang aming Partilis. Bayan muna. Ang lama ng mga panukalang amyenda. Ang lama ng mga panukalang amyenda ay lalong makakasira. Hindi po pala makakasira. Papatay sa ating lokal na ekonomiya. Lalong-lalo na sa ating mga micro, small, and medium-scale enterprises. Balao na pong pinahina ng mga patakaran neoliberal sa ating ekonomiya, sa ating mga lokal at katutubong negosyo, empresa at agrikultura. Sa ilang dekada ng pagbubukas ang ating ekonomiya, di na mabilang ang mga lokal na negosyo ang nalugi at nagsara. Sa katunayan, epektibong tinansorma ang patakaran ito ang ating bansa patungo sa pagiging isang import-dependent ekonomiya, isang export-oriented ekonomiya. Nakakaasa tayo sa imported na produkto mula bigas hanggang damit. Imported na lahat. Talu na ang gawang Pilipino dahil mababa ang kalidad ng ating mga produkto. Kundi dahil na rin, di na kayang labanan ang mga malalaking dayuhang negosyante na kayang magbabaha ng kanilang produkto sa ating bansa. Talu na rin. Talu rin po sa panukalang amyenda mga manggagawang Pilipino. Sinasabi na lilika ang trabaho ang pagbubukas ang ating ekonomiya. Subalit, posilvipong kabaliktaran ang maganap. Higit kumulang dalawang milyong manggagawa ang nagtatrabaho sa Philippine trade business. Mga negosyong posible mag-sara sa gitna ng mabigat na kompetisyon laban sa mga malalaki at mayayaman kumpanya. Malaking posibilidad din ng trabaho malilikha sa amyendang ito ay mga trabaho walang katiyakan. Nasaksihan natin kamakailan lamang ang biglang pagsasaraan ng ilang malalaking dayuhang kumpanya na nagresulta sa pagkatanggal ng libo-libong mga manggagawa. Naganuntso din ang ilang mga kumpanya sa kanilang napipintong pag-alis sa Pilipinas at paglipat sa ibang bansa. Ang ura-uradong paglaya sa mga kumpanya at pagtanggal sa kanilang mga empleyado ay isa sa mga masasamang posibilidad na haharapihin natin kapag naipatupad ang amyendang ito. Posibilidad na maari rin, na maari sana nating iwasan kung tayo ay hindi nakaasa sa dayuhang negosyo. Mga posibilidad na ating maiwasan kuunahin natin ang pag-aalaga at pagpapalakas ng ating mga lokal na industriya. Industriyang lilika ng lokal na produkto at lokal na trabaho. Panghuli, noong taong Two Thousand, na unang inoprobahan ang Retail Trade Liberalization Act, sinabi noon na mali ang quote-unquote "protectionism" na patakaran at sa halit yakapi natin ang patakaran globalisasyon. Tanong ko-
Time expired.
Fifteen seconds, Mr. Speaker.
Tanong ko, kailan naging mali na protektahan mo ang iyong pamilya? Kailan naging mali na protektahan ang iyong trabaho? Kailan naging mali na protektahan ang ating ekonomiya? Kailan naging mali na protektahan ang ating inang bayan? Kailan man ay hindi tumali? Hindi ang dayuhan, hindi ang iilan. Bayan muna. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Lagman?
Mr. Speaker, his two colleagues, I vote no on House Bill Number Fifty-Nine, which further inordinately allows foreigners to own and operate retail stores in the Philippines. Our economic leaders' excessive predisposition to attracting foreign investments is grossly ampathiotic, even as the thesis that abandoning the nationality barriers will lead to the rapid entry of foreign capital is purely theoretical. Barely the renewal or liberalization of nationality or citizenship requirements in some vital industries, like in the retail trade, is not a major factor in attracting foreign investments. In Two Thousand, the proponents of the liberalization of the retail trade propagandized that the proposal would enhance competition, increase employment, facilitate transfer of technology, and improve the national economy. Despite the enactment of Republic Act Eighty Seven Sixty-Two or the Retail Trade Liberalization Act, these objectives were never realized. Now comes House Bill Number Fifty-Nine, which further liberalizes the retail trade by lowering the required minimum paid-up capital for foreign retail investors from US dollars 2.5 million to US dollars 200,000, or approximately only 10 million pesos. Even if additional 100 foreign retailers will come in, only a minimum of 20 million will be generated in foreign investments. This is a paltry foreign investment which should not warrant the further marginalization of Filipino retailers. Moreover, the bill assures that foreign investments in retail trade could be repatriated with ease by mere prior notice to the Securities and Exchange Commission and the Department of Trade and Industry. The aggregate cost of stacked inventory of foreign retailers of products made in the Philippines is reduced from 30% to only 10%, curiously and ironically, under the section caption "Promotion of Locally Manufactured Products." This is counterproductive and would discourage the production of local products. The alienation of vital public utilities like capital-intensive telecommunications enterprises as well as of medium and small retail businesses is utterly anti-Filipino and violative of the Constitution, which mandates for the development of a self-reliant independent national economy effectively controlled by Filipinos. House Bill Number Fifty-Nine promises the holy grail of foreign investments. This is empty braggadocio, disutude of empirical angurages. For all foregoing, I vote no.
Honorable Suntay?
Mr. Speaker, while Republic Act Eighty Seven Sixty-Two, otherwise known as the Retail Trade Liberalization Act of Two Thousand, allowed foreigners to invest and join the retail trade in the Philippines, it did not lose sight of the need to put protections in place in order to preserve the Filipino retailer's competitive advantage. While I would have been more than happy to support a bill amending some of the various restrictive provisions of RA Eighty Seven Sixty-Two, House Bill Fifty-Nine is simply too much. It does not only do away with the protections for the Filipino retailers, it went further to reduce the capitalization requirement for 100% foreign ownership of retail business to 200,000 dollars, which is simply too low. It will effectively provide almost free access to our local retail industry, posing a threat to our Filipino retailers. This adjustment will cause a complete paradigm shift in our country's retail industry. House Bill Fifty-Nine will undermine the competitive advantage of our micro, small, and medium enterprises, adversely affecting them due to their limited capital capacity. The proposed legislation would lower the minimum paid-up capital to approximately 10 million, almost equivalent to the asset requirement for small enterprises. This is problematic. For 99.3% of the business sector are micro and small enterprises. More importantly, as cited by the Asian Development Bank, micro and small establishment are the one are one of our country's largest employer. Fly-by-night foreign investors will increase given that the minimum paid-up capital is only set to 200,000. It will be easy for foreigners to come and go from the country. The provision only requires a notification to the SEC and DTI for its intention to reproductate its capital and cease operation in the country. There is no required minimum years of investment for them. As foreigners stay in the country, they can apply as alien residents or even Filipino citizen and enjoy the person benefits given, less opportunity to our original local players. Similar to the case of Pogos, they might even bring in foreign employees for their further pulling down local employment. On a more important note, the proposed measure then counters to the provisions of the Constitution, specifically on Article Twelve on National Economy and Patrimony, specifically on Sections One and Ten, additionally on Article Two,
Time expired.
Declaration of Principles of the State Policy, emphasized to Section Nineteen. It is rather clear on our Constitution that we must protect the economic interests of the Filipino and the entire country. As the House of Representatives, we are supposedly the House of the Filipino people. It is only imperative for us, congressmen from the various legislative district, to stick with the spirit of the Constitution and legislate measures which will safeguard the interests of our very own citizen, the Filipino people. The House Bill on Liberation, in my belief, contradicts this principle, so I vote no.
Honorable Sarate?
Salamat, Ginoong Speaker. Muli, no ang boto ng kinatawang ito ng bayan muna sa House Bill Number Fifty-Nine o ang Retail Trade Liberalization Act. Ito ay ang huling kabanata sa listahan ng mga panukalang bumubuyangyang sa ating lokal na ekonomiya sa dayuhang kapital. Sa pagkakataong ito, ang mga small and medium-scale enterprises naman ang ating ibabangga sa higanteng kapital ng mga dayuhan. Matagal na ang dumadaing ang mga maliliit na negosyong Pilipino sa kawalan ng lokal na suporta sa kanila, pati na rin ang pagdagsa ng mga produkto mula sa ibang bansa. Ginoong Speaker, ang ating bansa ay nananatiling at trasado sa lahat ng larangan ng industriya. Katunayan, ito ay isa sa malubhang kakulangan ng ating pamahalaan sa ating mga mamamayan. Ito ay nagpapalala sa kawalan ng disente at sapat na kabuhayan sa abanteng gamit at mga pamaraan sa produksyon at sa lubos at sustinable na paggamit sa ating likas na yaman. Sa mundo sa kasalukyan, Ginoong Speaker, ay ilang siglo ang layo ng produksyon ng mga mauunlad na bayan sa mga bansang katulad ng Pilipinas. Halimbawa, habang ang ibang bansa ay automated na ang kanilang agrikultura at nakapagpa-produce na ng hanggang lapas sa kanilang kinakailangang ikonsumo, dito sa Pilipinas ay humihila pa rin ng kalabaw para mag-araro ang marami sa ating magsasaka tulad ng ginagawa ng mga ninuno nila ilang siglo na nakakalipas. Kaya naman, Ginoong Speaker, ang pagtrato sa lokal at dayuhang mga negosyo na tila may kompetisyon daw sa pagitan nila ay isang malaking kabalintunaan. Sa katutuhanan, tuluyan ng kinikitil at papatayin ang mga lokal na mga negosyo kapalit na mga higanteng kumpanya mula sa ibang bansa. Mas mura, maaring maunlad. Ngunit kapalit nito ay ang trabaho ng dalawang milyong manggagawang Pilipino na nakaasa sa mga negosyong retail sa ating bansa. Katunayan, Ginoong Speaker, marami sa mga Pilipino MSMEs ay dumaraing na sa pagdagsa ng mga dayuhang small and medium enterprise retailers, laro na sa larangan ng pagkain. Nilalabag nito ang bandato ng Konstitusyon na paunlarin ang umaasa sa sarili at nagsasariling pambansang ekonomiya na pinumumunuan ng mga Pilipino. Nilalabag din ang panukalang batas na ito ang nakasaad sa Konstitusyon na dapat inuuna ang kapakanan ng mga Pilipino kay sa mga dayuhan. Interes ng mga dayuhang retail companies ang pinatsisibahan, pinatsisibihan ng panukalang batas na ito. Habang tinutulak na mga Foreign Chambers of Commerce ang House Bill Number Fifty-Nine, mariin itong tinututulan ng Philippine Retailers Association at iba pang organisasyon ng mga retailers sa ating bansa. Malinaw na ayaw ng mga Pilipino ang batas na ito at sana bilang mga kinatawan ng ating mamamayan, ang boses sila ang ating tindigan at hindi ang dayuhang namumuhunan. Katulad po, Ginoong Speaker, na pagpasan natin ang amyenda sa Philippine Public Service Act kahapon, malaking kataksilan sa sambayanan ang panukalang batas na ito. Kaya muli, Ginoong Speaker, isang dumadagundong na no ang boto ng kinatawang ito. Salamat po, Ginoong Speaker.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that the two bills that the House approved on third reading today, namely House Bill Five Eight Three Two and House Bill Five Nine, be immediately be immediately be transmitted to the Senate.
Any objection? The Chair is none? Motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider I move that we consider on second reading House Bill Number Six One Nine Four as contained in Committee Report Two Two Zero, that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
Any objection? The Chair is none? The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Six One Nine Two.
Nine Four.
House Bill Six One Nine Four, an act providing for the delineation of the specific forest limits of the public domain and for other purposes.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate and that we recognize the Chairman of the Committee on Natural Resources, Representative Elpidio Barzaga, to sponsor the measure.
Any objection? The Chair is none? Representative Elpidio Barzaga is recognized to sponsor House Bill Six One Nine Four.
Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, as Chairman of the Committee on Natural Resources, it is my distinct honor and privilege to present for consideration and approval of this August body, House Bill Number Six One Nine Four, entitled, "An Act Providing for the Delineation of the Specific Forest Limits of the Public Domain and for Other Purposes." House Bill Six One Nine Four is actually the product of substitution of two House Bills, namely House Bill Number Ninety-Eight and House Bill Number Four Five Four Zero. As part of my sponsorship speech, let me quote the provision of Article Twelve, Section Four of the Philippine Constitution. Section Four provides that the Congress shall, as soon as possible, determine by law the specific limits of forest lands and national parks, marking clearly their boundaries on the ground thereafter. Such forest lands and national parks shall be conserved and may not be increased nor diminished, except by law the Congress shall provide. And unquote, while in this connection, after thirty-three years from the date of the effectivity of the Nineteen Eighty Seven Constitution, and in spite of the fact that in previous Congresses, Fifteen Congresses, Sixteen Congresses, and Seventeen Congresses, similar bills similar bills were passed on third reading by the House of Representatives, unfortunately, no final action has been made making these bills a law pursuant to the requirement of the Constitution. Admittedly, Mister Speaker, this is a bill of national importance because under this bill, if it will become into law, there will be the specific delineation of specific forest limits. And therefore, all lands which are outside of the forest's specific limits will be alienable and disposable, whereas those within the boundaries would not be the subject of alienation or disposition. And because of the importance of this bill and considering further the constitutional mandate, I most respectfully move for the approval of House Bill Number 6194."
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member wishes to interpolate as sponsor, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I move that we proceed to individual amendments.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, to propose the individual amendments, again, we recognize Congressman X. J. Romualdo.
Congressman X. J. Romualdo is recognized for his amendment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, we'd like to propose an amendment on page 5, line 14. We propose that the phrase "immediately after the passage" be deleted and replaced with the phrase "upon the effectivity."
What is the pleasure of the proponent of the sponsor?
Well, I accept the proposed amendment without any objection.
What's the pleasure of the majority?
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve.
Any objection? The Chair is none.
On second reading, House Bill 6194 as contained in Committee Report 220, on second reading.
The amendment is approved.
Mr. Speaker, our next proposed individual amendment is on the same page 5, this time on line 17. After the word "permanent," we propose to insert the following proviso: Provided that the protected areas established as such under Republic Act Number 11038 or the Expanded National Integrated Protected Area System Act of 2018 shall be excluded from the coverage of the said forest lands.
Was the comment of the sponsor?
I accept. No objection.
For the part of the majority?
Mr. Speaker, the majority accepts the proposed amendment.
Amendment accepted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 6194 as amended.
Those who are in favor on to approve House Bill 6194, please say aye. Those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 6194 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up additional references of business and direct the Secretary General to read the same.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bills and Resolutions as additional reference of business for proper referral to committees.
Additional reference of business, Resolution, House Resolution 787. Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of late Adoracion J. Villanueva, wife of Deputy Speaker Eduardo Brother Edi C. Villanueva, representative of Cebac Partilis, by representatives Caetano Alan Peter, Romaldes Ferdinand, and Abante.
The Committee on Rules.
Additional reference of business, messages from the Senate. Message dated March 9, 2020 informing the House of Representatives that the Senate on even date passed without amendment, House Bill Number 4961.
The Committee on Local Government.
Message dated March 9, 2020 informing the House of Representatives that the Senate on even date passed without amendment, House Bill Number 2998.
The Committee on Local Government.
Message dated March 9, 2020 informing the House of Representatives that the Senate on even date passed Senate Bill Number 640.
The Committee on Health.
Message dated March 9, 2020 informing the House of Representatives that the Senate on even date passed with amendments, House Bill Number 1477.
The Committee on Health.
Message dated March 9, 2020 informing the House that the Senate on even date passed with amendments, House Bill Number 1799.
The Committee on Health.
Message dated March 9, 2020 informing the House of Representatives that the Senate on even date passed with amendments, House Bill Number 4463.
The Committee on Legislative Franchises.
Message dated March 9, 2020 informing the House of Representatives that the Senate on even date passed with amendments, House Bill Number 4581.
The Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill, message dated March 9, 2020 informing the House of Representatives that the Senate on even date passed with amendments, House Bill Number 4582.
The Committee on Legislative Franchises.
Message dated March 9, 2020 informing the House of Representatives that the Senate on even date passed with amendments, House Bill Number 4583.
The Committee on Legislative Franchises.
Message dated March 9, 2020 informing the House of Representatives that the Senate on even date passed with amendments, House Bill Number 4584.
The Committee on Legislative Franchises.
Messages dated March 9, 2020 informing the House of Representatives that the Senate on even date passed with amendments, House Bill Number 5490.
The Committee on Legislative Franchises. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker.
Additional reference of business, messages from the Senate. Message dated March 9, 2020 informing the House of Representatives that Senate on even date passed with amendments, House Bill Number 5871.
The Committee on Health.
Committee reports, report by the Committee on Public Works and Highways and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill 6585.
The Committee on Rules.
Report of the Committee on Justice, Committee Report Number 291 on House Bill 6589.
The Committee on Rules.
Report of the Committee on Justice, Committee Report Number 290 or 292 on House Bill 6590.
The Committee on Rules.
Report of the Committee on Justice, Committee Report Number 293 on House Bill 6591.
The Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, we are in receipt of a message from the Senate informing the House that the Senate passed with amendments, House Bill Number 1477 on upgrading the Karaga Regional Hospital in Barangay, Washington, Surigao City, Surigao del Norte into a tertiary level hospital. We have been advised that the author of the said House Bill have no objections to the amendments introduced thereto by the Senate. Mister Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 1477. So move, Mister Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Once again, Mister Speaker, House Bill Number 1799. We are in receipt of a message from the Senate informing the House that the Senate passed with amendments, House Bill Number 1799, entitled "An Act Renaming the Talisay District Hospital in Talisay City, Province of Cebu, into Cebu South Medical Center and Appropriating Funds Therefore, Amending for the Purpose Republic Act Number 7799, entitled "An Act Establishing a District Hospital in the Municipality of Talisay, Province of Cebu, to be known as the Talisay District Hospital and Appropriating Funds Therefore." We have been advised that the author of the said House Bill have no objections to the amendments introduced thereto by the Senate. Mister Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 1799. So move, Mister Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, we are in receipt of a message from the Senate informing the House that the Senate passed with amendments, House Bill Number 5871, entitled "An Act Upgrading the Maria L. Elizar District Hospital in the Municipality of Taguayan, Province of Quezon, into a Level 3 General Hospital to be known as the Maria L. Elizar General Hospital under the direct supervision and control of the Department of Health and Appropriating Funds Therefore." We have been advised that the author of the said House Bill have no objections to the amendments introduced thereto by the Senate. Mister Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 5871. So move, Mister Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, the House and the Senate have approved on third reading, House Bill Number 831 and Senate Bill Number 640 respectively. We have been informed that the Committee on Health, sponsor of House Bill Number 831, as well as the author thereof, are in concurrence with the provisions of Senate Bill Number 640. In accordance with our rules, I move that we adopt Senate Bill Number 640 as an amendment to House Bill Number 831. So move, Mister Speaker.
Any objection? The Chair is none. The motion is approved.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect the following House members to the respective committees. To the Special Committee on Strategic Intelligence, for Vice Chairperson Congressman Alfred Vargas as Senior Vice Chairperson, Congressman Jose Cuellar Alvarado, and Congressman Mike Defensor as Vice Chairpersons. For Members, Congressman Bong Bravo, Congressman Joseph Bernos, Congressman Raoul Tupaz, Congressman Jose Ping Ping Tejada, Congressman Presley De Jesus, Congressman George Bustos, and Congressman Lawrence Defensor. So move, Mister Speaker.
On the part of the majority, no objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect Representative Vicente Sofriano Veloso III as Member of the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability. I so move, Mister Speaker.
On the part of the majority, any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect Representative Vicente Sofriano Veloso III as Member on the Committee on Public Accounts. I so move, Mister Speaker.
On the part of the majority, any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to nominate and elect Representative John Marvin Newell Serbonieto as Assistant Majority Leader on the Committee on Rules. I so move, Mister Speaker.
On the part of the majority, any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we consider for adoption, House Resolution Number 787, that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution.
Any objection? The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Resolution Number 787 for consideration, for adoption.
House Resolution 787, resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of late Adoracion J. Villanueva, wife of Deputy Speaker Eduardo Brother Edi C. Villanueva, representative of Cebac Partilis.
Those who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 787 is adopted. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we take up additional reference of business. Let the Secretary General be directed to read the same.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of bills and resolutions as additional reference of business for proper referral to proper committees.
Additional reference of business, House Bill Number 6567, "An Act to Prevent the Keeping of Any Animal for Health and General Order in High-Density Settlement Areas."
The Committee on Health. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend the session.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader. My dear colleagues, the Speaker of the House would address us. Thank you very much, dear colleagues. There is a biblical principle wherein we are asked to be the salt and light. And regardless of our religion, sa mga kapatid nating Muslim na nandito, those who are very spiritual, not spiritual, I think the symbolism of salt and light is very clear to all of us. If we were to turn off all the lights in this August hall, the smallest piece of light or the smallest inkling of light, whether it be a ballpen, your cellphone, a lighter, will light up the whole session hall. Dun tayo mapapatingin sa light. The light shows the way. In the same manner that salt is used to season but also to preserve. So when we say be the salt and light, I think now is the best time to absorb that. During the Sea Games in late November, early December, the athletes, the family of the athletes, the coaches, they all inspired us. They gave us hope, they gave us faith, they gave us pride. Now that we are facing many challenges, it is now the house of the people who should give us hope, who should inspire us, who should show people that we have faith and not fear. Yes, if you spell "house of the people," it will go to the word "hope." So I hope that during this next few weeks, we will actually be giving hope and faith to our kababayan. I'd like to thank from the bottom of my heart all members of Congress, opposition, administration, minority, majority, Luzon, Visayas, Vindanau, those of you who provided the quorum, those of you who questioned the quorum. Maraming, maraming salamat sa inyo. Without you, we wouldn't have been able to achieve what we've achieved in the past few months. In any metrics that you look at and while you look at the screens, approved on third reading, 470% more or better performance than at the same period of the 17th Congress. 300% on second reading, total measures 178% and 180% sa measures processed. And siguro po, kung meron din tayong pwedeng palakpakan aside from ourselves, Majority Leader Martin Romaldes, the teams of the Rules Committee, and of course, our deputy speakers. We'd also like to thank the minority. Sapagkat hindi naman namin to magagawa pag wala kayo. And to be fair, minsan mahaba lang, pero you make legislation better. The interpolations, the suggestions, you know, force us to think and force us to come up with better legislation. And this is reflected and acknowledged by our people. The 63% public satisfaction rating by the Social Weather Station and the 66% Pulse Asia Survey, which is the highest that Congress ever got, is an acknowledgement of the hard work that all of you have been doing. So now, may I ask you in the coming weeks, as you visit your districts, as the party list representatives goes to the sectors that they serve, let us articulate together the vision. We are lost pag walang vision. Diba? Pag walang direksyon, mahirap magplano, almost imposible magplano pag walang vision. And to simplify the vision, whether or not we are for this administration, President Duterte has simplified it by saying "a safe and comfortable life for all Filipinos." This is quite difficult to ponder on in the next few days because on our minds is the problem of COVID-19. So hindi ka na-safe, hindi ka pa-comfortable. Yan po ang mindset ng marami right now, not only in the Philippines but in the whole world. If you look at the various news outlets, traditional media, radio, listen to radio, watch TV, read the papers, napakaraming issues. Sa mga taga-marawi dito, you're still waiting for the rehabilitation. Sa mga taga lugar na tinamaan ng Yolanda, lugar ni Martin, mga tagasamar dito, kay Lucy, head natin ng committee that deals with disaster, marami pa rin kulang. Sa mga taga-Mindanao dito na tinamaan ng earthquake. And of course, the most recent, sa Batangas, there's so much to do. What are we going to do to be able to solve these problems? In the last few months, we have showed that we cared. We have called the different secretaries, undersecretaries, the private sector, we have passed resolutions, we have had roundtable discussions, we have, many of us went to Batangas, went to the different places. Congressman Deputy Speaker Pulong, for example, spent a lot of time in Mindanao to help those hit by the earthquake. But I think it was really special that for the first time in history, we did not have our sessions here, but we went to Batangas to tell them not only that we are with you, but we are with you. Not only to tell them we are with you again, but to tell them we are you. Because ang sakit ng kalinkingan ay sakit ng buong katawan. And whether in Metro Manila, you're in Locos, you're in Basulta, you are a Filipino. So I hope we will be given a chance to visit, as a Congress, other regions in the country, whether or not there are calamities in the area. Let's not wait for them to go to Congress. Let's allow Congress to go to the different regions of our country. The COVID-19 gives us two choices: fear or hope. Siguro 'yung fear po, mahirap i-control 'yan, pumapasok na lang 'yan. But we can fight it. But hope, we have to work on it. Bakit po tayo nagse-session ngayon? Kasi gusto natin ipakita na may pag-asa. Bakit po kanina nag-cut tayo ng ribbon sa bridgeway? Because, yes, we didn't have 1,000 people or 10,000 people, many events are canceled, but I think if we take the right precautions and listen to the health professionals, we can see, we can show people na kailangan may level of normalcy, diba? Kasi hindi namang pwede because of fear, lahat tayo na sa bahay na lang, wala ng magtatrabaho, walang magpropagate ng pagkain, mas maraming Filipino ang magsasuffer. Kagabe, si Congressman Lopez pinakita sa akin ang isang meme ng mga bata na panay mga panay mga dumi ano sa katawan, diba? Tapos nakalagay, kami sa tundo, hindi kami tinatamaan ng COVID. And it was, you know, just such a powerful way of communicating that the rich and poor deal with COVID-19 in so different ways. Ang mayaman umaangal dahil wala ng mabili na alcohol sa grocery. Ang mahirap walang pambiling pagkain. Ang mayaman nagdi-disinfect ng bawat portion ng kanyang bahay, pero mahirap walang bahay. Ang mga taga-taal na hindi na pwedeng bumalik, nandun pa rin sa evacuation centers, diba? So the problem is quite complex. That's why I urge my colleagues, together as an institution, in the next seven weeks, let's continue working. Let's have committee hearings. Let's have roundtables. Let's take the precautions. Let's include the executive department. Let's come up with executive legislative solutions. Let's meet with private, with the private sector and businesses, how we can help. And let's meet with our constituents. And let's ask the government to release the funds that are needed. Ngayon na ang problema, kaya pa. Huwag na nating tayong nasabihin ng mga tourist guides na namamatay na sila. Alam naman natin ngayon na matumal na ang kanilang negosyo. Sa transportation, pag walang pasok, ang tricycle driver na isang kahit isang tuka, alam na natin, diba? Na kulang ang kikitain nila. So why wait? Let's be proactive, and let's work with the executive to get to the people what they need immediately. So I'd like to address the Office of the President and the Senate. The House of Representatives is willing to work. So if you want to change the legislative calendar and the next new weeks, gusto niyo magkaroon tayo ng session at ibahin natin 'yung calendar? Payag po. And let me ask you today, my dear colleagues, payag po ba kayo magsession kung kinakailangan? Thank you very much. Lastly, I would like to speak for the more than 10 million OFWs. And I know many of you here, Kong Eric Pineda, Kong Raymond, 'yung mga nasa labor OFW, 'yung mga party list natin that have OFW constituents, maybe you can speak better than I for the OFWs. But just because I'm here, allow me to thank every one of you for passing the law that will give our OFWs and those seeking foreign employment their voice in the cabinet by having their own department. I was in the DFA. I believe that I was one of the more progressive secretaries that really spent time with the OFWs, but still kulang pa rin. Let me assure my kababayan here, including my colleagues, including in the Makabayan Black, this will not set a precedent to have a policy of exporting our kababayan. This is simply a mechanism where at the highest level, meron nag-aasikaso sa OFW na walang ibang trabaho. Hindi katulad ng Dole, na trabaho din niya ang employment dito. Hindi katulad ng DFA, na diplomacy is also their job. So let me thank you for that, and I am looking forward for the Senate to passing this department. And I'm looking forward to a great team being appointed, a team that will not look at making money from the OFWs and not abusing them, but for protecting them. Sa lahat ko ng pinag-uusapan ko natin, may gastos. So you've heard the President talk about closing a cigarette company that wasn't paying the right taxes. You heard about airlines that paid. You heard about water companies that have won an arbitration award, yet waived it. And now you're hearing about power producers and the Pisan and what's old. Tingin ko pag naghalongka tayo, marami pang may utang sa gobyerno. I know some of these are complex issues, and we will give everyone due process. But may the Congress of the Philippines make an appeal, lalo po dun sa mga malalaking korporasyon. Kung may utang kayo, magbayad namang kayo. Kasi pag nagbayad kayo, dito niyo matutulungan talaga ang ating bayan. Kun titignan niyo po, parang pinapasan na natin, pinapasan na ng Kongreso. It's like we're being crushed by all the problems, natural disasters, including the virus, poverty, unemployment, underemployment, disease. So it's time to lift Filipinos out of the darkness. It's time to lift Filipinos from hunger and poverty. It's time to lift Filipinos from hopelessness. You know, the more I think about all of the problems we've gone through in the last few months and in my 28 years in public service, magaling na tayo magreact. At madaling sabihin, dapat proactive tayo. Pero madaling maging proactive pag tapos na 'yung problema, diba? Like ngayon, sa COVID-19, ang dami ng export talaga. At 'yung iba meanwhile, ba't 'yung iba nakaka-cost pa ng problema rather than nakaka-solve? So may I propose that during the break, aside from working for Congress to go paperless, aside from working that the Congress will be the model pagdating sa zero waste, aside from making it gender-sensitive, sa mga lahat ng kailangan natin ayusin sa Kongreso, I would like to propose that we open a new center. And the proposal is to name it Life Innovation and Future Thinking Center, or the Lift Center ng Kongreso. Because it is only, it is only to have future thinking that we can look at all of these problems and find solutions even before the problems hit us. So hindi po ako magpapakahaba, alam ko pong hinihintay kayo ng inyong pamilya, 'yung iba't ibang mga bloke, alam ko may pagpupulong pa, 'yung ilan mga grupo dito. Some are thinking whether they'd stay and talk to the secretaries, some would think you'll go home. But let me tell you, that same schedule as if may sessions tayo, the staff of Congress will be here, will be ready to assist, and will be working to try to solve many of these problems. So again, nagawa natin 'tong lahat, hindi dahil sa isang tao, hindi sa dalawang tao, hindi sa isang team. Kung hindi dahil sa lahat ng kongresista, ay nanampalataya sa Diyos at nagtrabaho para sa tao. Magandang gabi at maraming maraming salamat. God bless you and your constituents. Majority Leader. Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we authorize all committees to conduct meetings or public hearings if deemed necessary during the adjournment of the House from March 12, 2020 to May 3, 2020. I so move, Mr. Speaker. Are there any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is approved. May I just remind all of the chairpersons and comsec to give advance notice so that if some will be in their constituencies but want to attend, they'll have more time to come back. Majority Leader. Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn session until May 4, 2020, Monday, 3 o'clock PM. Any objection? Hearing none. Session is adjourned till May 4, 3 PM, 2020.